Okay. We're here for the Beaumont City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 1st. And I'll call this meeting to order at 5:16. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember Fenn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Protem White?
Here.
And Mayor Lara is absent this evening.
All right, in response to Riverside County currently in the orange tier, which allows for indoor gathering with modifications, this meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. And do we have any public comments for our closed session?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
All right, and Mr. Pinkney, can you please read the items for discussion in closed session?
Yes, closed session will be item number one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 5495-7.6. City-designated representatives are the city manager, Todd Parton, and Administrative Services Director, Carrie Mendoza. The employee organizations are the Beaumont Police Officers Association and the SEIU.
Thank you. I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session. And we'll see you then. I think she's got that. Did you need a time?
All right, we'll call the regular session of the City Council meeting for the City of Beaumont. Tuesday, June 1st, called to order, and we'll start with a report out of closed session. Mr. Pinkney, do you have anything to report?
Yes, the council met in closed session, item number one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, city-designated representative, city manager Todd Pardon, and Administrative Services Director Carrie Mendoza, the employee organizations, the Beaumont Police Officers Association, SEIU. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, so then we'll call the open set, the regular session, this meeting to order at 6:00. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim White.
Here.
And Mayor Lars absent this evening.
All right, and Mr. Santos, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, start and begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, in response to Riverside County currently in the orange tier, which allows for indoor gathering with modifications, this meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided in the front of the agenda. And at this time, do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
All right, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council wants to pull for consideration off of the calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
And Mayor Lars absent this evening.
All right, and Mr. Santos, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, start and begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, in response to Riverside County currently in the orange tier, which allows for indoor gathering with modifications, this meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided in the front of the agenda. And at this time, do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
All right, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council wants to pull for consideration off of the calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
And now we'll move on to public hearings. We'll begin with item nine, public hearing for the dissolution of improvement areas 19D, 19F of CFD number 93-1 and formation of CFD number 2021-1. And we'll get a staff report from Mr. Pardon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council. This proposal before you tonight, really, as the caption had read, is for the dissolution of two improvement areas within the Fairway Canyon subdivision. So there are two new sections that are being mapped for development and is instead creating CFD number 2021-1. And the CFDs are being formed pursuant to development agreement, which the city committed to creating CFDs. The new formation does comply with the policies and practices that the city has deployed on CFD formations over the last couple of years, actually, the last five years. We do have our staff consultants who are here to present to you tonight. So Heidi Sheppi with Webb Municipal Finance is here to walk you through the formation. So with that, Heidi, can I turn it to you?
Certainly, Todd. Yes, and here we go. I was just waiting for my presentation to open up here, so let me go ahead and share my screen with everybody. Nicole, is that okay unless you wanted to?
No, that's fine. Go ahead. That's best.
Okay, and share. Okay, I want to make sure everyone can see the presentation. So this evening, we have for you the next step in the formation of CFD 2021-1, the Fairway Canyon CFD. To recap, these first few slides are going to look very familiar. We went over them at the resolution of intention, but I wanted to touch on them again.
All right, we'll call the regular session of the City Council meeting for the City of Beaumont. Tuesday, June 1st, called to order, and we'll start with a report out of closed session. Mr. Pinkney, do you have anything to report?
Yes, the council met in closed session, item number one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, city-designated representative, city manager Todd Pardon, and Administrative Services Director Carrie Mendoza, the employee organizations, the Beaumont Police Officers Association, SEIU, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, so then we'll call the open set, the regular session of this meeting to order at 6:00, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Here.
And Mayor Lars is absent this evening.
All right. And, Mr. Santos, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. Okay, start and begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, in response to Riverside County currently in the orange tier, which allows for indoor gathering with modifications, this meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office, or by calling in using the phone number provided in the front of the agenda. And at this time, do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
All right, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council wants to pull for consideration off of the calendar? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. And now we'll move on to public hearings. We'll begin with item nine, public hearing for the dissolution of improvement areas 19D, 19F of CFD number 93-1, and formation of CFD number 2021-1, and we'll get a staff report from Mr. Pardon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council. This proposal before you tonight, really, as the caption had read, is for the dissolution of two improvement areas within the Fairway Canyon subdivision. So, there are two new sections that are being mapped for development, and is instead creating CFD number 2021-1, and the CFDs are being formed pursuant to development agreement, which the city committed to creating CFDs. The new formation does comply with the policies and practices that the city has deployed on CFD formations over the last couple of years, actually, the last five years. We do have our staff consultants who are here to present to you tonight. So, Heidi Sheppi with Webb Municipal Finance is here to walk you through the formation. So, with that, Heidi, can I turn it to you?
Certainly, Todd. Yes, and here we go. I was just waiting for my presentation to open up here, so let me go ahead and share my screen with everybody. Nicole, is that okay, unless you wanted to?
No, that's fine, go ahead. That's best.
Okay, and share. Okay, I want to make sure everyone can see the presentation. So, this evening, we have for you the next step in the formation of CFD 2021-1, the Fairway Canyon CFD. To recap, these first few slides are going to look very familiar, we went over them at the resolution of intention, but I wanted to touch on them again, just as a recap and reminder. So, Fairway Canyon consists of two planning areas, planning areas 25 and 26, and the development for Fairway Canyon. The developer or landowners are Woodside Homes, SDC Fairway Canyon, LLC, and DR Horton. Ongoing developments is occurring in the Fairway Canyon Master Plan Community. This CFD is also known as the former improvement areas D and F of improvement area 19 of CFD 93-1, and the formation action this evening will also dissolve those improvement areas. So, this CFD is being formed in place of those old improvement areas from 93-1. We have 529 residential homes, this will consist of four zones in the two planning areas. Each zone would consist of two, or each planning area consists of two zones. Zones one and two are planning area 25, and zones three and four are planning area 26. You'll see the zones one and three are the units bordering the golf course, have the larger lots, and zones two and four are the zones that have smaller lots, and they're the more internal zones. To continue, so, the general location, east of Tuckwheat's Canyon Parkway, north of Oak Valley Parkway, south of Champion Drive, west of the I-10. Zones one and two, as I mentioned, are in the northern section, zones three and four in the southern section. Zones one and two are being developed by Woodside Homes, with SD Fairway Canyon still owning a portion of that property, and zones three and four are under the development of DR Horton. There's a general vicinity map to show you the basic location. This is reflecting the actually now-recorded boundary map. So, in our previous presentation, we had the unrecorded version, so this has now gone through the recording process with Riverside County, so these parcels will have this boundary reported on them. The RMA and special tax rates, so for the CFD, we have the special tax for facilities, which is the portion that provides revenue for bonds to be issued in the future. There will be no escalation, we have estimated effective tax rates of 1.982%, and then, again, there's the ranges of the special taxes for each of the zones, and the tax ranges are based on square footage of the homes, so smaller homes would have a smaller tax rate, larger homes would have the larger tax rate. The eventual bonds will be issued to finance facilities, not fees, the direction of council and city staff, that's the way that we've been going with these more recent CFDs. And the total eligible improvements, so the facilities, including streets, sewer, storm drain, park improvements, are currently totaling a little over 21 million for eligible financing. This CFD also has the special tax for public services, so this is your public safety, police and fire tax, that all of the newer CFDs are required to have in order to develop and form a CFD. The special tax for maintenance services, which provides for the maintenance of those items that the city will have to maintain on behalf of this development coming into the city's boundaries. And then, as we discussed earlier at the resolution of intention meeting, the special tax for maintenance services, which is contingent, so these are tax, these are services that are currently being provided by the HOA, or will be provided by the HOA, and the city does not have the requirement to maintain them. However, in the event that something happens and the HOA goes bankrupt, or is not maintaining the areas to the city or county standards, then the city would have the ability to trigger an event that would allow the city to take over the maintenance, and then assess the property owners for that maintenance. This is to ensure that things like, that could be considered public safety issues, can be maintained without the city having to finance those maintenance items. So, our formation calendar, so we've completed step one, which is our resolution of intention to establish, and the resolution of intention to incur bonded indebtedness. We are now on to step two this evening, which is the consideration before City Council to hold a public hearing and election, and adopt the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance, and then, pending step would be the final, should tonight be successful, the second reading of the ordinance. So, before you this evening for consideration, we will be conducting a public hearing, adopting the resolution establishing the district, which would also dissolve improvement areas 19D and F of 93-1, we'll hold the election of the landowners, and then we would introduce that ordinance that I mentioned, levying the special tax. And with that, myself and the finance team are available for questions.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, but should we open the public hearing first?
You can.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:10? And, two quick questions. There's two special maintenance services on your presentation, one of them is contingent for 600, and the other one was 205, I think. Can you just help me understand the difference between those two maintenance services?
Absolutely, so, the maintenance services that will be assessed, the 205, those are services that the city will be providing, so the development came in, these are items that the city will have to maintain and finance through city funds, so we are assessing those funds and paying the city through the CFD. The other item, the contingent special tax, those are maintenance services that the HOA is going to be maintaining.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, what is the 205? What is the city's maintenance that the HOA is not doing now, that wouldn't be part of the contingent?
There is bioswell maintenance, I can look into the details of the 205 real quick. There's bioswell maintenance, some drainage maintenance that the city wanted to take on, as well as some of the exterior maintenance of lighting and intersection?
Okay.
Mediums.
Okay, and then the other question I have, this may be for Bryant, Mr. Forbath, the in bonded indebtedness we had, so, so the eligible improvements is 21.5, what was our not to exceed bonded indebtedness on this? Do you, do you remember?
On the original CFD?
No, well-
I don't recall-
No, on this, on the one that we approved earlier.
The, the not to exceed bonded indebtedness on this CFD 2021-1 is 19 million, and that number is calculated as a very conservative estimate of what the revenue generated from this development could finance.
Okay.
So, the developers put, put forth a list over $21 million worth of facilities, but not all of those facilities will get financed through this financing.
That was my next question, so then not all of the eligible will be financed, some of it, if, if it reaches that much, some of it's going to be paid for by developers, if it's not, either it's not eligible, or it's above the amount that we're going to be bonded for, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Anybody else? Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, and the only thing I see an escalation for is for the public services, for the CPI, is that correct?
The maintenance services also has an escalation of 2% or CPI, whichever is greater, to continue in line with the inflation of what the city pays on an annual basis.
Okay, so-
And then, again, those two have the escalator, but that is an escalation on the maximum special tax annually, so if the city did not require that amount to meet the requirements of the budget, then they could enroll a lesser amount.
Perfect, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Santos?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to follow up on that, on the escalator, on that, you said that whichever is higher, I mean, you got the CPI or 2%. If my recollection on the economic, you know, numbers, CPI could go up to 5 and 1/4. Is that, are we looking on the future of this, you know, finance?
Yes, so CPI could, could go, you know, anywhere, depending on what inflation is on an annual basis, but the idea behind a CPI or 2% is to make sure that we have the ability to escalate that maximum tax to cover the city, the city's requirements for that budget. So, if CPI were to escalate by that amount, it could be likely that the city's amount that they would need to pay to maintain those items would also increase in that same area, so the, the maximum tax would escalate at the CPI. But, again, the, the city doesn't have to enroll that maximum special tax, they have the option to enroll a lesser amount if needed.
Yeah, that's my concern on that, because the, the homeowners will be, you know, shouldering that kind of increase on that. Thank you for the explanation on that.
Mr. Finn, before I ask you if you have any questions, I skipped over public comments, so do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
All right, Mr. Finn, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I did, I did have a quick question. So, the numbers that you put up, where you had per home, that ended up with the 2%, is that, 2%, does that calculate all of the, like, the service fee and all of the extra ones in there as part of that grand total percentage?
So, it calculates all overlapping special taxes and assessments, based on a snapshot of when we form the district, and then we're using preliminary pricing of what they're, they're marketing the product at, and then that could change over time, so when we do go out and do the marketing of the bonds, we actually evaluate the effective tax rate at that time as well, and will take any necessary steps to adjust if we need to, but the 2% is including everything, all of the, all of the special taxes that are included that will be enrolled.
Okay, all right, and appreciate that, and it does seem to fall in line with what I've seen and learned from selling homes in Beaumont for the last 18 years, and what was often said when, when clients would go from one new home neighborhood to the next is, what's your tax rate, and they were often quoted 2%. And so, that falls in line, so it's nice to see that, that it wasn't anything exorbitant, the city is as, having some more services involved in that since then, so it's nice to see that it all falls in line and looks, looks normal for me, so thank you.
And, Mr. Forbath, you brought up a question, or a, a issue that I was going to ask you about, and that is, we are right now under obligation by our development agreements to put in place 19D and 19F, so we're not really creating, I mean, in actuality, we're creating a new CFD, but we're replacing two areas that we were required by our development agreement to fund, correct? Or to provide CFD to?
That's correct, Councilmember White, there's an existing development agreement that required the formation of the CFD. This CFD is merely replacing the existing improvement areas, and it does a couple of things, the, the previous rate method of enforcement had a couple problematic areas in it, and then also, it did not provide for the police and fire, you know, public safety tax that this does, and so, the purpose of this is to replace the older one with the newer, more updated one that complies with the city's policies.
Okay, is there any more discussion from council?
The, the only other, just, Councilmember White, excuse me for interrupting, but there's one other thing just to add this evening, is the approval of the resolutions that you will be asked to adopt tonight, also approve the formal acquisition agreement that sets forth the facilities to be acquired from the developer when completed, and again, as, as Ms. Sheppi outlined, those are really just facilities, we're not talking about financing fees here.
Okay. So, we'll move on, has the city clerk's office received written protest to any of the matters addressed in this public hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within the community facilities district number 2021-1?
I have received zero written protests.
Okay, if there are no further comments from the public or members of the council, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 6:19. And I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the City Council establishing the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 2021-1, Fairway Canyon, authorizing the levy of special taxes and calling an election therein, and resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont acting as a legislative body of the city of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 2021-1, Fairway Canyon, determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within the community facilities district, and calling elections therein. Do I have a motion? I so move. And I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. The resolutions that we've just adopted call for an election within CFD number 2021-1 to authorize the levy of the special tax, the incurring of bonded indebtedness, and the approval of an appropriations limit for CFD number 2021, which is to be held at this time by the city clerk, and just a reminder, this is the property owners, since there are no registered voters in this area, it's just the, the landowners that are, that are involved in the election. Is that correct, Mr. Forbath?
That is correct, Mayor Pro Tim White.
All right.
All ballots have been cast in connection with the election for CFD number 2021-1, and the election is now closed. Each of the ballot propositions have been approved by more than 2/3 of the votes cast in the election for CFD 2021-1.
I would like to now entertain a motion to approve resolution of the City Council acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 2021-1, certifying the results of the June 1st, 2021, special tax and bond I so move. And I will second that. And could we have a recall? All right, not a recall, let's try a roll call.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes, let's not let the mayor think I was trying to get him recalled at this point. So, the resolution certifying the results of the election for CFD number 2021-1 has passed, and at this time, the clerk will read the titles of the ordinance, and the council will waive further reading, we'll see. So, can you read the titles of the ordinance?
Yes. First one is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beaumont Acting in Its Capacity as the Legislative Body of the City of Beaumont, Community Facilities District Number 2021-1, Fairway Canyon Authorizing the Levy of a Special Tax Within the Community Facilities District." That one has to be motioned by itself.
Okay, so I, I move that we waive further reading of that?
You can make a motion to waive the further reading and adopt the, the ordinance in one, if you'd like.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yes, so I will move, I will make a motion to waive the further reading and adopt the motion as you, or adopt the resolution as you read it.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes, and we need to do the same of the second resolution, correct?
The next two can be approved together.
So, I would now ask for a motion to waive, is, that's the one we just did, correct?
That's the one we just did, yes, yes.
Yeah, there should be a second ordinance to, related to the dissolution of the existing CFD.
Okay, so...
It's the-
Now, we're on to the, the ordinance is dissolving the improvement areas, so it's the last page.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I think I got it.
What's that?
You got it now? I should say, I think I got it, if you don't have it.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so I move that we waive the first reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the City Council of Beaumont dissolving improvement area number 19D of the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 93-1, and ordering the recordation of a notice of secession of special tax lien to improvement area number 19D, and waive the full first reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beaumont dissolving improvement area- dissolving improvement area number 19F of the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 93 dash one, and ordering the recordation and notice of secession of special tax lien to improvement area number 19F.
Second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. And I think we're finished with that item, correct? All right, so we'll move on to item number 10. Public hearing for the consideration of a development agreement for Beaumont Crossroads, formerly known as Rolling Hills Ranch Specific Plan, establishing sewer discharge limitations. And our staff report will be from Christina Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council. Before you tonight is consideration of a development agreement for Beaumont Crossroads One. Um, this site is formerly known as the Rolling Hills Ranch Specific Plan. It's located on the south side of State Route 60 east of Peturo Boulevard, and it's currently occupied um, by Wolverine and by Amazon. The site has been subject to various entitlements in the past and was originally subject to a development agreement back in 1994, which was amended in June 2004, and um, then subsequently amended again in 2014 and expired in August of 2019. There have been no additional development agreement amendments um, since that time. The proposed development agreement before you this evening is intended solely to address sewer discharge limitations and establish a maximum allowable sewer flow. Um, based on current sewer infrastructure, the sewer treatment plan expansion and proposed improvements in the area, um, establishing a maximum sewer flow is necessary to ensure the integrity of the city's system and to ensure capacity is available for future development. Um, if more capacity or more discharge is needed, then it also um, allows the city the, um, the opportunity to reassess and determine um, what mitigation um, or improvements would be required. The language in the development agreement specific to sewer discharge um, is referenced, um, excuse me, references the um, sewer study that was performed, um, sewer area study and preliminary lift station design for Beaumont Crossroads Two Logistics, um, that assess a number of projects and established um, projected cumulative um, flows for all projects in the area. So um, at this time, staff and the applicant have agreed to the language that's in the development agreement and by which um, the needs for excess flows if and when that time comes will be addressed. Um, this project is currently built and occupying. Um, it was subject to an EIR back at the time that the project was adopted. Um, the development agreement is not subject to SEQA. Resolution number 1987 dash 34, which governs the um, at, the creation and, and execution of development agreements in the City of Beaumont does require certain findings to be made. Those findings are included in the staff report, and all of the findings can be made in a positive manner. Um, there are no unusual or changed circumstances at this site um, that would affect the entitlements or consideration of this development agreement. And at this time, staff is asking that council hold a public hearing and waive the first full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city council of the City of Beaumont adopting the development agreement between the City of Beaumont and Beaumont Crossroads One. So I'm available if you have any questions, as well as um, other staff. And um, I don't see the applicant on yet, but he may be on the line.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at 6:28. And do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line for the time.
Okay, so let me close the public hearing at 6:20. We'll go 6:29. And now council discussion. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the first full reading and approve by title only and our ordinance of the city council of the uh, City of Beaumont adopting the development agreement between the City of Beaumont and Beaumont Crossroads One.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
And we'll take roll call.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Item 11, a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Beaumont, California, adding chapter 17 dot 11 dot 150, storage facilities to the Beaumont Municipal Code. We'll have a staff report again from Christina Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Um, before you tonight is um, sort of the formal um, presentation of some of the items we previously discussed um, at the last couple council meetings. This pertains to the moratorium that is currently in effect for the uh, the prohibition temporarily on um, storage, storage establishments, self-storage facilities, automobile parking facilities, et cetera. And by way of background, staff had requested this moratorium be in place until the general plan update was approved, which that did take effect in January 3rd. And um, staff has, has begun, um, or staff at that time began working on putting some development standards together and looking at how those development standards would help the city meet the goals of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and um, the new goals and policies of the general plan update. So at the last meeting, um, council had asked staff to work with some folks in the industry to gather some information on um, on their thoughts on obviously what those development standards and guidelines would look like and how that would affect um, those types of businesses that are currently operating or would like to operate in the city. And staff has spent the last several weeks working with um, a number of people regarding that. Um, for purposes of appropriately establishing the development standards, staff did divide the uses into two groups. So we first looked at mini storage, self-storage, or public storage facilities, which are one type of operation. And then we looked at other types of storage yards. So that could be contractor building storage yards, um, parking or RV storage yards, um, truck storage or parking, um, truck terminals like that. So we grouped those together. The reason we did so is because one use, the mini storage in particular, clearly has structures involved, clearly um, requires more space than the other. Um, there, um, it's a different approach to, you know, how a site could be utilized for that. So um, with the other types of storage facilities, the mi, the um, contractor storage yards and things like that, you know, there doesn't necessarily have to be a building. And so we wanted to take a little bit of a different approach with those development standards. So as I mentioned last month when we were discussing this, we analyzed um, regulations for a number of cities in Riverside, San Bernardino, and LA counties. And um, after talking with um, industry professionals and folks that have businesses here in the city, we pulled together some of the development standards from things that other cities have done as in, and then looked at some specific needs that we have here in the City of Beaumont. Um, and, and some things we could put in place to help ensure that we achieve the um, goals of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as um, try and work on our um, jobs, housing balance, and things like that, that we know um, the city needs to, um, the city needs to work on. So, um, at this time, um, I've, I've attached the proposed ordinance, and I'll, I'll call out a few of the um, a few of the highlights of the ordinance and then um, make the recommendations. So um, one of the key items that staff is recommending is to allow storage uses only on irregularly shaped parcels, not suitable for commercial or industrial jobs producing uses. So um, when we analyze the um, storage facilities or um, uh, vehicle storage lots, that doesn't, um, they don't tend to have a high employment, um, a high employment count. So we might be talking three or four employees on a couple of acres of land. Or in some cases, our storage facilities, we have around five, six, seven, eight acres of land, and there's still only maybe um, you know, three or four employees versus some of the manufacturing or um, small-scale commercial that we have coming in where we have, you know, an acre of parcel with a commercial building that's got three units, and there might be, you know, 15 employees doing some sort of skilled labor and things like that. So um, we try to look at um, what the, the job offering is versus the, the use of land and try to find some balance there. Um, we're also looking at um, requiring some enhanced screening measures. So if we have storage along the public streets, um, or anything that's visible from the public right-of-way, that we can work on screening that with something other than just a solid block wall that might be, you know, subject of, you know, graffiti or something like that. So um, encouraging some more mature landscaping to be incorporated with that. Um, we're recommending some security cameras and lighting um, be incorporated, and um, some property maintenance be included as well. And then um, staff added some standard conditions of approval for storage uses um, that we would like to see included as well. Um, at this time, staff is requesting that council hold the public hearing, or at least open the public hearing, and then continue the item to June 15th council meeting, um, to allow additional time for public input. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:36. Do we have any public comments?
Uh, yes, I'd like to speak.
We have a member of the public within the Zoom meeting.
So uh, Mr. Spiker, is that how I say that, or is it Spike?
Correct.
Okay, Spiker. Mr. Spiker, go ahead.
Uh, my name's Troy Spiker. I'm here on behalf of 84 Lumber. Uh, I just wanted to speak quickly on this issue as we've been experiencing a direct hardship from this moratorium. Um, as I'm sure most of you are aware, we have a 84 lumber facility on Euclid Avenue that's been there for quite some time as a business in the community. Uh, we recently have um, begun to run out of space in our parcel and have been looking for options to expand our footprint in order to uh, properly store materials. Uh, back in August of 2020, we entered a lease um, for a vacant land parcel at the corner of Euclid Ave and Third Avenue, uh, with the intent of outdoor storage. Um, we were fairly familiar with the ordinances, and it seemed like it would be an improved use. Uh, so we entered that um, lease with the anticipation of being able to uh, pave the lot, fence the lot, and utilize outdoor storage. Uh, unfortunately, we were unaware of the moratorium in place. Um, so we have been stuck paying a lease uh, with, with a space that we haven't been able to use. Um, we've been trying to figure out what options might be available for us, but I think it's become clear at this point that with the moratorium in place, uh, we're just not going to be able to utilize that lot. Uh, and it puts us at risk of um, you know, needing to find a larger location uh, that can suit our needs for this, this area. Um, we'd obviously love to stay in, in Beaumont, and I know um, I, I understand the reasoning behind the moratorium. I get that you don't want to uh, have storage space taking up areas that could supply jobs, but I can't say as a member of 84, you know, if we have that additional space, that will create additional jobs uh, just by pure demand of trucking, um, yard help, et cetera. So it, that's really, I just wanted to have some public input that uh, I'd, I'd love to see a resolution to this, uh, hopefully sooner rather than later, as we do have an option to purchase this property um, by the end of July that we would love to exercise. But again, we, we need to be able to ensure that we will be able to utilize the space appropriately uh, before we can do so.
Thank you. And we have someone else who would like to speak.
Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
Yes, Nicole, I have one caller on the line. I'll transfer him in now. Okay, just transferred to mid, Nicole.
Caller, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the Beaumont City Council. My name is Bill Blankenship. I'm the Government Affairs Director representing Neop Inland Empire Chapter. Our chapter is part of a national and state association, and the local chapter has over 300 member companies doing business throughout the inland empire. Neop Inland Empire is the Commercial Real Estate Development Association for developers, owners, and investors of office, industrial, retail, and mixed-use real estate. The logistics industry is a well-established part of the city's economy that has contributed to local job growth. The industry is fueled by the growth trends of Eve Commerce and your strategic location along a major trade corridor that connects supports to Los Angeles and Long Beach. The logistics industry is your strong community partner. On behalf of the Neop Inland Empire, I'd like to thank the city council for encouraging a process that has allowed for the industry's association to meet with your city staff. The meeting allowed for an exchange of ideas and for the city to share its goals in addressing how future truck storage yards will be integrated as part of the community's development standards. I'm looking forward to continuing our conversation with your staff prior to the June 15th city council meeting. This time will allow us to fully vet the storage facilities document and address any concerns and modifications which will be beneficial to the goals and objectives for the city, as well as the industry. Neop Inland Empire is focused on finding a path towards a solution which preserves the community's character and allows for the logistics industry to succeed. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Neop Inland Empire Chapter.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Do we have any other public comments?
Carrie, do we have anyone else on the line?
No other callers on the line.
And I have no written comments.
Okay, so before I close the public hearing, um, Ms. Taylor, could you respond to sort of Mr. Spiker's comments? And a couple of questions that I, I would like to know the answers to is um, if we do approve this on June 15th, the timeline that he needs to be able to take action on his property? Um, if you could just speak to that, how soon that would be? And um, and then the other question I'd like you to speak to, just in the public um, comment, is um, a moratorium, once we, the moratorium is ended and we put in place our standards and guidelines, um, we still, as a, as a city, I don't know if it's done by planning or done by council, but we still have the ability to make decisions on land use based on the number of jobs, um, those kinds of issues. Uh, so we're not giving up that ability once the moratorium is ended. So if you could address those two questions, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, well, um, so in regards to timing and whatnot, if, if the first reading is approved on um, June 15th, then it would have to come back to the next council meeting for the second reading, and an ordinance ticket, takes effect 30 days after that. So it would be, um, depending on how many meetings we have in July, either the 6th or the 20th, and then it would, um, it would take effect. So um, that would be essentially the timing. Um, as far as um, the 84 lumber specifics, we have, um, staff has been in contact with 84 lumber, um, you know, numerous times over the, the last several months. And unfortunately, they did get caught in the middle of the moratorium. Um, as an existing business, um, the property they're looking to expand onto is not immediately adjacent. And so that poses a slight bit of a problem for staff in that we would have to treat it as an entirely new project, as opposed to just an expansion of an existing use. And so um, if it was the immediately adjacent parcel, I think we would have had some latitude to work with them on establishing their um, the expansion for their storage materials as an incidental use to their primary use. Um, but again, since it isn't immediately adjacent, there's one parcel in between, it would have to been run through um, an entirely new process. So um, we did not, we did not feel with uh, what the moratorium, how the moratorium was established, that there was any leeway to really um, take that forward. So um, I, as far as our timing goes and 84 lumber's timing on the purchase and sale and whatnot, um, I, I don't have the benefit of having all those details. But like I said, with um, the second reading, once it's adopted, an ordinance takes effect 30 days after that. So um, again, depending on the dates, um, I guess 84 can backtrack that into their timeline and whatnot.
So if it, if it were approved June 20th, it'd be 30 days. So if it were approved June 20th, it'd be 30 days from that point?
If the second reading were read on, you mean July 20th or?
Um.
June 15th.
You wouldn't be able to bring a second reading back to June 20th because we're out July 6th, possibly?
So in order to have a second reading at the June 15th meeting, we would have to do the first reading tonight. Otherwise, if we do the first reading June 15th, the second reading would then be July 20th if council is dark on July 6th.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then the issue regarding the jobs decisions once the ordinance is in place?
So the Economic Development Strategic Plan lays out some goals that the council had adopted back a couple of years ago, and the general plan, goals and policies piggyback on that. With project approval, we do have the opportunity in some cases to make findings showing whether or not a project is consistent with the general plan and with the other guiding documents for the city. So we don't entirely give up the latitude to make those decisions. However, in some cases, uses are permitted outright, and so then the use is not up for discussion per se. It's just a matter of going through the appropriate entitlement process.
Okay. So at that point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:46 and open this up for council discussion. Mayor Protim, did we want to continue it or are we closing? That would be the motion, right? We'd make a motion after we have council discussion?
You can decide to continue it.
Did you want, do you have any questions for discussion?
Oh, before, I can do a couple then before we close it up.
Yeah.
All right.
May I go? Yes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
So a couple of quick questions. Number one, for those units that are kind of a blend, so you've got those that are storage facilities and RV parking, so do they have to follow standards from both category one and two?
So I think we would defer, as we typically do, to what the primary use is and would categorize it to the primary use, and then an incidental use becomes incidental, and then it falls in line with the overall development plan for the primary use. A good example of that is what you see in the new storage facility at California and First, where it's a self-storage or mini-storage facility, and they do provide RV parking on the inside or boat parking or whatever you can, but it's screened from public view. So you have your building and all of the storage around the outside and then some on the inside, and then they have the storage area for the RVs or boats and whatnot on the inside of the facility. So it's by default screened from public view.
And that actually was my next question. I was going to use that as an example because I noticed your building is kind of like the masonry style, so it is screened from the outside. So that would be okay, of course.
Yes.
All right. And just a question on the speaker that spoke, that parcel that he's referring to, is that going to have a problem once this goes through? I mean, is it irregular shaped or is this going to be considered a storage yard, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it is storage, but we did caveat in the ordinance that businesses that are existing should be allowed to expand and continue their use. So we wanted to be conscious of that and not completely stop, you know, everything is, obviously 84 lumber and a number of other businesses that operate in the city, you know, are good city partners, and they employ people and they provide services, you know, to our residents and to the other businesses that operate here. So the idea is in no way to limit that from occurring. So we definitely want to make sure that they can expand their use as well. The intent of these guidelines would be for a new individual use that would come in.
Okay. And I appreciate that because that was kind of one of my considerations is to make sure that we, you know, took care of those that were established here and so forth. So for him, it would be more of a consideration of timing on how this all plays out rather than rules.
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Finn, you can go ahead.
Yes, Christina, I have a question for you. So if somebody had, was out there using a vacant lot for storage that's considered non-conforming, would this be, would it be grandfathered in? So if this is adopted, then anything new coming in would apply?
Yes. So if they are legally operating, not just a guy who's parking trucks with no approvals, right? But if someone is legally operating a business right now, current business license, all the appropriate, you know, entitlements or whatever were required, then yes, they would be, they would be grandfathered in as a legally operating business. So this, then the site location standards would not apply to them.
Okay. And where was that, that intersection again for 84 lumber? Was it Third and Euclid? Did I hear that correctly?
Right. Yes, Euclid and Third.
And is that on, that's not the south side then of that intersection, is it? Is it the, is it the southwest corner, not the southeast corner?
So it's, so 84 is on the corner there and?
Yes, so it?
Right.
So I've got a satellite map pulled up on my computer. I'm looking at it right now.
So then if you go north on Euclid, there's the propane facility and then?
Pharaoh gas, right?
Right, right. And then there's the vacant lot just north of them. That's the lot that?
Okay. So if pharaoh gas wasn't there, then it would be adjacent to them?
Exactly. And we would consider that an expansion of an existing use or an incidental need for their currently operating business.
So with that expansion, is there verbiage in there saying if it's within a certain distance of their existing, you know, property? Is there something like that that puts a limit to it?
No, there's not. There's not. So the last one I actually put in shall be allowed to expand the current operations onto immediately adjacent parcels, but this brings up a good point, and this is precisely why I wanted to have this conversation and continue the item, to hear these issues and knowing that it's not immediately adjacent, we're going to have to provide some consideration for expansion or the needs of businesses that may not be able to expand incidental or immediately adjacent but still need to expand. Mr. Blankenship, who I've worked with on this since the last council meeting, brought up some good points as well from NAOP along a similar vein, which is a lot of times we have the distribution facilities with vehicles or trucks that come in, and they can't always all get in to unload at the same time. So there's the need for off-site holding for the trucks to keep them off of the public street. And so that's another situation where there may not be able to be an expansion immediately adjacent to the property, but there might be a need to have some off-site ability for something that's incidental to the primary use.
So I understand it correctly. So then looking at this lot, it looks physically larger than 84 lumber's current spot. They could then potentially use it, the big trucks come in there, dump their deliveries, and then smaller vehicles can then go and pick the stuff up as needed, and it cuts down on the overall big truck traffic.
Correct. Or however 84 decided they were going to run that, but theoretically, yes, that is, that would be one of the scenarios that would work.
So I kind of like the idea if it's something close by to their existing, you know, property, but if it were like on the north side of the freeway and, yeah, that doesn't make sense, you know? And they probably wouldn't do that either, but I've also seen the demand that's out there and the desperation of finding, you know, any place to put their trucks or equipment or supplies so they can keep their businesses, you know, operating, and they wouldn't want to work that.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want so hodgepodge in everywhere that it just?
Yeah.
Makes our, makes our traffic situation worse.
Right. And it's, it's a very fine line that staff is walking with trying to balance the needs of businesses like that, that we understand there is a constraint for land, land is very expensive, there's, you know, getting to be less and less available land that's viable for these types of things, but also balancing the goals of trying to increase jobs in the area and maximizing the available land that we do have to make sure it's available for those higher job-producing, you know, businesses that might want to come into the city at some point in time. Because once a piece of land is entitled, as long as they don't violate their entitlements, it's entitled in perpetuity. So we can't then go back and change our mind and say, hey, now we've got someone who's got 100 jobs that wants to commit and use this, so you guys have to go. We don't have that latitude. So it's, it's still just walking a fine line and trying to find the balance to accommodate and address all the needs.
So to understand the process and to try to keep it simple, then who would be the decision maker on such a thing, using the 84 lumber, example, on this other lot?
So something like that would go to planning commission. The municipal code requires any construction or project that is from vacant land be approved through the plot plan approval process by the city's planning commission. So it would not necessarily come to council. The type of environmental assessment or anything that would need to be done for that property wouldn't warrant coming all the way up to city council, would generally be handled by planning commission. In some cases, depending on the environmental or the type of project, it could potentially come to city council.
Okay. And so that property owner could have the right then to basically appeal the planning commission's decision and ask that to be brought to the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Mr. Santos?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Christina, this is similar to, you know, the pallet company we have on Pennsylvania and the freeway tan. And when they expanded, I mean, probably you could, you know, share some, you know, experience or knowledge on this. I mean, they, they expanded to California and I think that's Third Street, similar to that. I mean, seems like this is a similar case on that, that they, they need a space just to do a storage on this. Can you expand that? I mean, on the side of the pallet company that got a vacant lot right there on the corner, and they still, you know, in, in the business of using that lot in there. And this lot is close to 84 lumber on this. Thank you, Christina.
Yes, sir. So you're correct, the pallet company did expand and they are over there off California, I believe California and Third. And they did that actually before the moratorium was in place. And so there was no issue with them. Their zoning was appropriate for them to occupy that site as well. So if, if the moratorium had already been lifted or if it had not been in place at the time, 84 lumber started wanting to expand or looking at that piece of property, they also would have been able to expand over onto the site. And staff, planning staff actually met on site there with 84 lumber and with the property owners to try and talk about, you know, what was going to happen out there and if there was any way that we could, that we could work with them. But there's, in all fairness to, you know, applying the moratorium equitably across the board, there was no way to really bring it forward without being in violation. So staff senses the urgency with this and, and we're bringing this, you know, with hopes of getting something adopted here shortly and then lifting the moratorium.
Very good. Thank you, Christina.
Okay, thank you. Just one last question. We really shouldn't be doing a first approved, the first reading today based on the number of changes that you're assuming we're going to be making, correct? Is that your advice?
Correct. Yeah, and I, which is why I recommended just continuing the item. I wanted to make sure I heard from council. I wanted to make sure council heard from the people that we've been hearing from and that we had enough time to digest again and make sure we get it right.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move to continue the item to June 15th, 2021, to allow city, to allow additional time for public input.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes. Now, item number 12, a public hearing for resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 22 through 26 and prior year project list, and a staff report will be given by Christine Day.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is your formal adoption of the CIP. Should you choose to move forward with the projects that were presented to you at your last meeting in May, the first meeting in May, I will call to your attention that we have made one adjustment since that presentation and if, in calling to your attention on the five-year CIP, on the very last page, we added a funding source for the state and local fiscal recovery program funds that will be received from the federal government. These funds, as the city manager have, has identified to the city council, can be used for certain things. And with those are utility improvements. With that, the staff has visited with city managers. So there is one project that is going to come forward to city council as part of your master plan, and so we've included that in here. It is, again, also at the Mesa Lift Station. So we've talked to the council about finishing out the 16-inch force main, finishing out the pumping system that would be required for the force main. And the second part of this project that we're adding in would be the design of an increased wet well capacity. Today, the wet well has about 19,000 gallons, which is just minutes of capacity. Should the pumps go down, there could be a potential overflow. This would increase the size of the wet well to roughly about 250,000 gallons, which would give your staff a one-hour response time. We felt like this is necessary because the, this particular wet well is a regional system. It has roughly three to four different lift stations that flow into this lift station prior to being pumped to the wastewater treatment plant. And as we calculated out, if, once we receive the call for service, if something goes down through your SCADA system, there is a response time that includes staff potentially responding to the plant to get the tractor truck and then responding out to the lift station. Now, best-case scenario, that would be a 30-minute response time. Worst-case, we're hoping that we get there within this hour. We wouldn't want to go too much above an hour because you really don't want your sewer, your wastewater to sit there and become septic before being able to pump over to your treatment plant. This, this lift station also has additional lift stations that will flow into it in the future, so it'll be up to five different lift stations that could flow into this in the future. We've talked to the city council at various times about potential fines that would be associated with overflows. This lift station sits right next to a creek, so your fines could be anywhere from a dollar a gallon to $1,000 a gallon. The net cost of this wet well expansion for construction, I didn't show it in the CIP, but what we're estimating as part of the wastewater master plan is somewhere in the three to $4 million range once constructed. You could imagine if we are pumping, you know, fortified lift stations into this, this system goes down, you could reach that, that construction cost very quickly with fines. And so we felt like this was a worthwhile project to bring forward and include. With the recovery funds program, we do have the money to set aside initially that we could start the design and be ready to do construction when the second set of funds is able to come through. Or even a little bit further down, council will have an opportunity to view the full integrated master plan that will cover a 10-year span when we go over the entire wastewater master plan with you sometime in July. But we wanted to make this a part of the CIP so that we could include it because it does make sense to make the force main, the pumping system, as well as this wet well expansion, one big design project moving forward. So happy to take any questions on that. Otherwise, all the projects are similar to what we saw before, so I won't go through those again, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at 7:04. And do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line? Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh four. And do we have any council discussion? We all good? All right. So I will take a motion on item number twelve. I'll make the motion to waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont adopting a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and related prior year CIP project list.
All second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protimway?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, proposed refunding of outstanding bonds related to improvement areas seven B, seven C, seventeen A, nineteen C, and twenty, community facilities, district number ninety-three dash one. Before we have a staff report, we don't have any, do we have a conflict of interest?
Mayor, I live on the area seven C. I'd like to recuse myself on this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's because?
I live on the area seven C.
Okay, great. All right. And we'll go ahead and go with the staff report, Mr. Parton.
Thank you. Does that mess up your steak dinner offer from Carrie?
That's not a break.
Okay, okay, very good. So we have presented for you tonight the authorization to proceed forward with the proposed refunding of these bonds. So we have a series of bonds that were originally issued in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. And so several years ago, we began the process to analyze the outstanding bonds that were on the books to determine which ones were eligible for refinancing, and then better to analyze those to determine which ones would offer appropriate levels of savings. So the team, as a matter of practice, looks and evaluates these every year and tries to determine what we should bring back. So if you remember, about four weeks ago, we had a discussion about these. Since they are advanced refinancings, they do not carry the tax-exempt basis pursuant to the IRS code change from about two years ago. So these would be taxable refinancings that are being presented for you. One of the things that I would highlight is that these refinancings will not extend the outstanding terms of the existing bond debt that's out there. In addition to that, if we have any of these bonds sales that do not meet the minimum thresholds that we're looking at here, we would bring those back for city council for additional consideration. So let's say, you know, we're looking at something that may be in the three percent range, or maybe just below that, we'd come back to you and say, you know, these are the results themselves, and give you an option to look at those. So with that, I would like to turn over to Mr. Bush and our financing team to walk through their presentation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. If the city could post the presentation, please.
All right, give me just a second to get it set up.
Nicole, do you not, do you have it?
I have to get it pulled up. Give me just a minute.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting it.
Sure.
Mr. Bush, we know them all, but why don't you introduce everyone who's here on your team?
Sure. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be for you again, council. I'm joined on the call by Brian Forbath, the district's attorney, bond attorney. Heidi Sheppi is also on. She's a special tax consultant. And Mr. Thomas Jacob is on, representing Stiefel, the underwriter. I'm going to kick off the presentation and cover the first few slides. Mr. Jacob's going to fill in a little bit of the middle. Mr. Forbath is going to cover the very specific slides relating to legal issues, specifically the SEC issues that we present to council each time. And then I'll come back and kind of close this out.
Okay, great. Looks like we have it now.
So with that, Nicole, I'm ready for the next slide, please.
Sorry, it's not a... I hit forward, but it's not showing on the screen. Give me just a minute.
Sure.
Or if you have it available and you want to share your screen while I...
Yeah. Tom, you got it by any chance?
I do have it handy.
Yeah.
Happy to share the screen.
Thank you, Tom.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Screen. Bear with me for just one minute. Right there, slideshow. There you go.
There we go. Thank you, Tom.
Welcome.
Let's go to the next slide, please. So our presentations are very consistent with what the council has seen before. I realize, Councilmember Finn, you know, you are new to the process of having us present this, so feel free to stop us along the way if you like. So we have three sections we go through. Tom and I will cover the refinancing overview. Mr. Forbath will cover the SEC compliance, and then I will come back around and talk about the issuance cost and schedule. Next slide, please. One more. There you go. So as Mr. Parton alluded to, we were before this group a little more than a month ago in April. We presented the opportunity to the council then. At that time, the market was a little more volatile than I think it even is today. So we were a little concerned about savings assumptions at that time, and wanting council input since there are five improvement areas. And as you will see in the presentation, the savings does vary by improvement area based on a couple factors that we'll go through during the presentation. We have prepared the presentation to include an option for the council, which we'll go through on based on your feedback at that meeting on April sixth, to present to you the concept of removing the inflators or escalators that you've asked us to do in prior meetings. So you will see that a little bit tonight. But as Mr. Parton alluded to, there's really no other adjustments being proposed other than an interest rate saving structure through a taxable transaction. And we will go through some of the details as we go forward. Next slide, please. As the council will recall, the outstanding balance of the bonds of consideration for tonight is a little more than twenty million dollars, represented through four bond issuance and five improvement areas. So two thousand twelve B and C and two thousand thirteen A and B are the bonds specifically we're looking at, with improvement areas twenty, seven B and seven C for the two thousand twelve bonds, and nineteen C and seventeen A for the two thousand thirteen bonds. As you'll see, different project size, different outstanding par amounts. And you'll see some of the larger parcels here represent a unique opportunity. You'll see the rates are fairly close at above five percent at the floor and five ninety-five at the ceiling for improvement area twenty. And the terms are a little bit spread out between twenty thirty-four and twenty thirty-nine. All of the bonds are issued and remain non-rated. We did look at the council's request, potential legislation that was being included or discussed, I should say, with the Biden administration infrastructure bill. I believe most of that bill is being considered as part of the budget process now. We're not hearing a whole lot about the tax exemption, as we may have in prior weeks. Tom may be able to to expand on this a little bit further. What I'm hearing, however, are different types of financing programs to assist with capital financing, like they used to have Build America Bonds and other subsidized-type programs seems to be back in discussion again at the at the federal level. And from this point, I'm going to turn over the remaining of this section to Tom Jacob. He's going to go through the specific details of the refinancing of these improvement areas. And again, Mr. Forbath is going to fill in on the legal aspects, and then I will finish the presentation with the concluding slides. So, Mr. Jacob?
Thank you, Mike, for being council members. Tom Jacob, representing Stiefel, the proposed underwriter on the refinancing. On slide six, here we present the the most recent savings figures based on market conditions as of last Thursday, May twenty-seven. These are a little bit different from the figures that were shown in the staff report, which were based on market conditions as of May nineteenth. Slightly different, but it's still at very strong levels. We wanted to give you the most up-to-date figures that we had based on current market conditions. You can see that we've bolded two rows in here, the first being the NPV savings percent and average annual savings per parcel or per homeowner. These are two very important metrics that agencies typically use to evaluate a refinancing. So if we move from left to to right, we see that NPV savings as a percent are very strong, particularly in improvement areas seven B, seven C, and improvement area twenty. They're in the double digits there. That's very, very strong. And for improvement areas seventeen A and nineteen C, range between that three and four percent NPV range. Average annual savings per homeowner similarly are very strong, ranging from about ninety dollars per parcel in annual savings in improvement area seven C, all the way up to a staggering six hundred and eighty dollars per year in improvement area twenty. In total, this refinancing based on current market conditions, again, is estimated to save little over eighteen hundred homeowners, roughly four point six million dollars, over the life of the financing. Again, as Mike mentioned, these figures assume that we maintain the existing debt structure for each of the improvement areas. And with every refinancing, staff and its financing team evaluate the the savings economics if we do, in fact, remove that escalating debt debt structure, which we've done on the following slides. So of the five improvement areas that we are looking at financing, only improvement area seven C and improvement area twenty have those escalating debt structures at two percent. So what happens if we remove those escalating debt structures? Well, you see, and forgive me for flipping back and forth really quickly, but the NPV savings and the average annual savings per homeowner slightly go up for the removal of the escalating debt structure scenario. So from about ninety dollars per parcel and thirteen percent in improvement area seven C, it's about fourteen percent and a hundred dollars if we remove the escalating structure. And then likewise for an improvement area twenty, if we maintain the structure, fifteen percent for NPV savings, average annual savings at six hundred and eighty dollars per parcel goes up to fifteen and a half percent and seven hundred and sixteen dollars per parcel. So those are those are pretty big differences. But I would say the the biggest difference isn't in these savings levels here, but rather how the savings are realized over the life of financing. And so we've analyzed each one of the improvement areas on separate slides. Here we show the impact of maintaining and removing the escalator on improvement area seven C. Again, we show you here graphically that if we maintain the escalator, we're really sizing the debt payments on the new bonds, refinancing bonds proportionally to the prior payments. That results in level savings of ninety dollars over the next eighteen or so years up until twenty thirty-nine. If we remove that escalator, it it increases from twenty dollars in twenty twenty-two to a hundred and seventy-one dollars in twenty thirty-nine because we are essentially leveling out the payments as much as possible. So if we repeat that same exercise for improvement area twenty, again, we have this staggering six hundred and eighty dollars in annual savings per homeowner over the next, you know, fourteen years or so. If we remove that escalator, savings increase from still very high three hundred and sixty-one dollars in twenty twenty-two all the way up to over eleven hundred dollars in twenty thirty-five, which is the final maturity of the bonds. Again, I think, as noted in the staff report, city council can elect to maintain the escalator in one improvement area and remove it in the other. It can do it on an individual basis. So these actions, or at least the removing or the maintaining, do not need to be done in tandem. City council can elect to do to tailor the structure how it how it would like. So that wraps up this section. And I will turn it over to Mr. Forbath to walk us through the legal.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Councilmembers, Brian Forbath from Stradlin Yaca again. So before you tonight, one of the the key documents that's going to be approved is the preliminary official statement for the bonds. And and that is the offering document pursuant to which Stiefel Nicholas will solicit interest from investors in purchasing the bonds. And again, that's subject to all the federal securities laws, especially the anti-fraud provisions. And so in connection with the SEC cease and desist order that the city entered into, there's certain disclosure policies that the city has been, you know, approved and required to comply with. And so we've made great efforts to make sure we've complied with all the provisions of those disclosure policies, and have fully disclosed the SEC enforcement action in the official statement. And again, you know, as part of the disclosure policies, we've had a sit-down, it's actually was via Zoom, but a flip-through with all the financing team of the official statement to confirm that all the information is true and correct, and there's no material omission. So we we did that in order to comply with the policies. Next slide, Tom. So there's a couple different actions here before you this evening. The bonds that were refunding were issued by the by the CFD ninety-three dash one, and also by were sold to the Beaumont Financing Authority, which was the actual entity that issued the bonds that were sold to the public. So the the actions before you this evening are a resolution of the CFD ninety-three dash one authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to refund the outstanding bonds that were issued on behalf of the improvement areas. Those bonds will be sold to the Beaumont Public Improvement Authority, which is the new improvement improvement, excuse me, the new joint powers authority that we approved a couple years back in order to sort of step aside from the Beaumont Financing Authority, which had the cease and desist order. And then the third action is the Beaumont Financing Authority needs to approve the form of an escrow agreement that essentially sets up what we would call a defeasance of the existing bonds, because those bonds aren't callable for a couple years. So in other words, we issue the bonds, the trustee holds on to those monies, and they're invested in securities that will be that will mature on the redemption dates of the bonds. So the documents that are being asked to approve tonight are there's certain indentures and supplemental indentures of the CFD and the Beaumont Public Improvement Authority. There's escrow agreements related to the to the bonds to be redeemed, the preliminary official statement, the bond purchase agreement, which is the agreement between the city and Stiefel Nicholas to pursuant to the issuance, pursuant to which Stiefel Nicholas will purchase the bonds. And there's also the continuing disclosure agreement, and then the hiring of the finance teams. And also, there's statutorily, there's what we call the good faith estimates that are attached to the staff report that set forth sort of the true interest costs and all the costs associated with the financing. And in addition to motions seeking the approval of these various resolutions, we would also be seeking direction on how you all would like to proceed with the debt structures on improvement areas seven C and IA twenty. In other words, do we want to keep the debt service as it is with escalating debt service? Or do we want to, or the council desire to get rid of the escalators and level out the the debt service on the bonds? Mike, with that, back back to you.
Thank you, Brian. Next slide, please, Tom. As the council is aware, with each of these transactions, since the beginning of the engagement of this team, we've been presenting to the council the cost of issuance for open disclosure. What I do want to point out to you specifically, the fees have been very consistent with your team. And as a reminder from our last presentation, we are bidding out underwriting services almost, I think, with every transaction, this being no different. So you can see the underwriters discounted not exceed nine dollars and twenty-five cents a bond. That is a downward trend as we start. discount and not exceed $9.25 a bond. That is a downward trend as we started bidding out these services to where we are today. Next slide, please. This is the schedule, if approved, tonight to go forward. This would be with, this would be in regards to either direction you take on the two improvement areas of either leaving in or removing the escalator. This is our schedule, assuming the council agrees. Tonight, we will work to post the preliminary official statement. We will work with the underwriters, start marketing the transaction, and we will be pricing the bonds in roughly two weeks or so with the goal of closing at the end of the month. The schedule is important for a couple of reasons. One, it certainly allows us to finish everything during this current fiscal year. It also allows us to work with Webb, who will have the revised assessments available for this next year's tax rule, which I think is important. So the dollars that you see here, although estimates are, should be pretty close to what you would expect around pricing time. I did go back and look very briefly at our prior presentation, and hopefully I'm not wrong here, Tom, but I think what you presented tonight is a little better than what we presented in April. Not by much, but slightly, a little bit better. So during that time, the last presentation, the market has moved around a little bit, but it's kind of bouncing back and forth. So I feel pretty confident where we are today, that we'll be able to get some things done based on what you're being presented here today. With that, myself and other members of the financing team are available to answer any questions that you have.
Hey, Mike, this is Brian. Just to jump back in on another thing, just one other thing to mention to the council is that we've applied for a rating on the transaction, and that there's, maybe you or Tom could fill them in on the schedule and a rating. And then also, there is an expectation that we'll likely get municipal bond insurance for, to ensure this transaction, which will help improve the ultimate interest rate on the bonds.
That's right. If I may add one thing, Mike, I'm sorry to jump in. We were a little bit conservative on certain estimates regarding the rating and bond insurance, and we're hopeful that those are going to come in more aggressive than what the assumptions are. And we should know a little bit more about those in the coming days.
Okay, are we ready for questions at this point?
Yes.
So let's start with public comments. Do we have any public comments on item 13?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go first. I have a number of questions. So I guess we'll start with you, Mr. Jacob. I think it was slide six where you had the original interest rates and terms in place for the current funding. Can we go back to that slide? I think it was, no, it's this one here, slide five. So a couple of questions. First of all, nobody's payments, no matter what we do tonight, nobody's payments are going to go up, correct?
That is correct.
And as Mr. Pardon pointed out, we're not extending the limit past these terms, but the new ones will all have the same term, correct?
That is correct.
So what would the term be then? It would have to be 2034?
Councilmember, for each one of the improvement areas, there will be different final terms. So as you can see under the column, which says terms, the terms on the new financing will match those existing terms. So improvement area 20, their term will, it will be final on 2035, and for 19C, they will no longer pay after 2036.
Okay, so then, that, I thought that was the answer to my next question, and obviously it's not. So on the rates, you have 5.95 to 5.0. On 20 is the highest, and 17A, 19C are the lowest. If you go to the next, I think it's the next slide?
Yes.
Why is the savings so different when it seems like the interest rates were fairly similar? So why is 17A, 19C, their savings is so much lower than the other three, when it looks like their current interest rate are very similar?
Sure. So not only for improvement area 20, where we see that the highest interest rate of nearly 6%, you can see that the NPV savings are the highest at 15%. So that seems fairly intuitive.
Okay.
And for 19C and 17A, almost a full percent lower, you have, you know, the 3.9 and 3.4% NPV savings. So it's a function of not only being refinancing at higher and lower interest rates, which impact the NPV percent, but also what's going to impact the NPV percent over time is that your, these bonds, the proceeds of these bonds will be sitting in an escrow approximately one year longer for 19C and 17A, because you can see that the optional call date on those bonds is September 1, 2023, whereas the optional call date on improvement areas 20, 7B, and 7C are a year earlier on September 1, 2022. So the longer escrow period is certainly going to impact the savings, which also drives the NPV savings percent as well.
Got it. Okay, so, and when you say the trust, the escrow is in the hands of the trustee, so any income off of those is then applied to the bonds, the new bonds, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
So what I'm saying is that when the new bonds are issued, those funds will sit with the trustee or the escrow agent in this case. Those bonds will pay to, the new bonds will pay existing or new bondholders. The old bonds will pay the existing bondholders until the optional call date in 2022 and 2023, and the difference of that is the savings.
Okay, I got it.
Councilmember White, sorry to jump in here. The deposited funds in the escrow, I think this is the question you were asking. They will be invested, so there will be investment earnings on escrowed funds. Those investment earnings will be used to pay down debt services. So we will bid out escrow services to see if there's an interested investor that will, you know, hold these monies and invest them on behalf of the district. And in exchange for that, they will pay interest to the district, and the district will use those monies to pay down the debt obligation.
Okay, great. And then, Mr. Forbath, you had mentioned that it was only when you explained our disclosure requirements based on the SEC cease and desist, you mentioned 93-1, and then you said you next spoke about 2021. Our disclosure requirements are the same whether we're at 93-1 refunding these or at 2021, correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, Mayor Protem White. I mean, your obligation to federal securities law is that your offering documents are true and accurate and all material respects, and that there's no material omissions of any facts necessary to make the statements there, not false or misleading. So we've gone to great lengths to make sure that that is all correct.
Okay, and I guess, okay, and I guess this, I should have asked Tom, Mr. Jacob, this. So on the 2% escalator, you showed the annual savings. Do you have an overall savings over the term of the bonds? I didn't see that.
So yes, councilmember, if we look at, if we maintain the current or existing debt structure, the aggregate savings, these are the total savings realized.
Okay.
And if we remove the escalator, here's where they are, at the bottom row right here.
So 576.
I'm sorry.
So the aggregate savings is what you're talking about, right? The 576 and 1.6, or 1.06? And then what's the other, can you go back to the other slide? Okay, so it's, not a whole lot aggregate, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, and I bring that up, so let me ask my last question, then I'll hand it off to the others and with a question for them. And I guess this might be for Ms. Shreppi, and that is, when will our homeowners see their first changes in their tax payments?
For this refunding, because the closing is June 30th, or potential closing, we will be able to incorporate the savings into the role this year. So when we come back to council on July 20th, the budgets and the roles that will be presented will include these savings to be enrolled in this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. And then my last comment or question is for the other council members. If we look at the 2% escalator, and I'm sort of coming to you, Mr. Finn, we look at the 2% escalated removal of that, the savings is significant in the final years, and if you don't mind bringing that slide back up, Mr., yeah. So the savings are significant in the final years, not so much early on. But it would be my thought that my home would be more, I'm sorry, a homeowner in this, in these areas, I'm not in these areas, would be easier, it'd be more appealing or attractive to a new buyer without the escalator and the larger savings at the end, that may outweigh the fact that they're not going to get the large savings right away. So I'm, I just am looking for you two to give me some input on where you think we should go on those. I personally think it makes sense to remove the escalator, and even though the savings are not going to be that high in the first few years. So I'll move to either of you, if you have questions or comments. Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, go ahead and leave those slides up, because those are the ones I, I'm going to start with. So let's go back to 7C. So the line there on top going up, that's your prior bond payment. So the new 2021 bond payments obviously are going to be lower because they're under the line. So we see a little spike there going in 2023, if we remove the escalator, correct? So they're going to have a lower payment than they're paying now. It's going to go up a little bit more than that, but still under what they were paying. Then it's going to go down a little bit, and kind of little spike there in 2033, and then kind of level off. Am I reading that correctly? And that's to whoever?
That's correct, councilmember. These are as close as leveling out these payments over time that we could get.
So more savings at the end, a little bit of a spike at the beginning, but still under what they're paying now, as opposed to going up with the escalator. So even though you're less, you're still going to see increased payments. And then on 12, on 20, go to the next slide if you would, same thing here. You remove escalator, you have a nice steady payment while saving more at the end, rather than seeing that escalator. So I just needed to make sure I was reading that right, because I agree with Mayor Protem White. I think the savings at the end really shows better, better for the homeowner, but I wanted to make sure that they didn't have that spike up, because then that's when they, they kind of wonder why their payments are going up. But it's still under. So my quick comment is I'm in favor of removing the escalator on both, but we'll see what councilmember Finn has to say. I have two more questions. One, on the taxable portion of this. So we're more than 90 days out before the optimal call date. So you mentioned in the report where it says refinancing may occur on a tax-exempt basis in the future. What is that referring to? Just if we get another call date somewhere closer that we might be able to qualify for tax-exempt?
Yeah, this is Brian Forbath. I'll answer that one. So essentially, in the future, if we get an opportunity to refund these bonds again, and we're within 90 days of the call date at that point in time, we would have the opportunity to refund these on a tax-exempt basis.
Okay. And my next question, if I can find it. So the savings that you're showing includes whatever is paid on the taxable basis, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Finn, did you have comments, questions?
Yes, thank you. Well, I guess for comments now, my question's not answered between the previous questions. But to add to that, I learned a valuable lesson in real estate when it comes to property taxes. I started down in Temecula, and there was two neighborhoods in particular. There was Vale Ranch, which had the highest property taxes percentage-wise in town, and Chardonnay Hills, which had the lowest. Chardonnay Hills sold for the most, or the highest amount per square footage because of that. So the market tends to average itself out. But something I think is important to me, and I think that it's probably important to the rest of the council as well, is I'm seeing too many good people leave the state because California is too expensive to live in. And anything that we can do to help cut those costs, and especially help those who are retiring, to cut those costs and to help them stay here, I think that helps. And so I think it's better that we eliminate the escalator with that greater cost savings in the future. So when our current population ages a little bit down the road, there's more likelihood that they have the option for themselves to stay here and not feel like they're forced out financially, because the property taxes keep getting more and more expensive. When we have the Prop 13 2% escalator as it is, they're going to see increases on that as well. And so I'm all for removing the escalator on all of the improvement areas. So that's my comment.
Okay. Any follow-up, Mr. Martinez?
Nope.
You're good?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start moving through the recommended actions. The first one, I'll take that one, and we can rotate this. A wave, a move to waive the full reading and adopt by title only, a resolution to the city council of city Beaumont acting as a legislative body of community facilities district number 93-1, authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds, and taking other actions in connection therewith, and to recess the city council meeting. I need a second. Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes. And Mr. Martinez, you want to do the second one?
Yeah, we'd like to convene a meeting of the board of directors of the Beaumont Financing Authority and waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the board of directors of the Beaumont Financing Authority approving the execution of escrow agreements in connection with the refunding of certain local agency revenue bonds of the authority and special tax bonds of the city of Beaumont Community Facilities District number 93-1, and taking certain other actions in connections therewith, and adjourn the board meeting.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes. And Mr. Finn?
I note that we convene a meeting of the board of directors of the Beaumont Public Improvement Authority and waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the board of directors of the Beaumont Public Improvement Authority, Riverside County, California, authorizing the issuance of its local agency refunding bonds and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $21,100,000, and approving certain documents and taking other actions in connection therewith, and adjourn the board meeting and reconvene the city council meeting and, okay, all in there.
And I think, I'll go ahead and second that, but I think we need to add that our direction as the three of us was to remove the escalators from 7C and improvement area 20.
Okay.
Is that okay with your motion?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we get recall or roll call?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes. And I think we're done. Thank you, Mike and Tom and Brian. All right, so we'll get Mr. Santos.
Thank you all.
You too. Do you go home? Why don't we take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back. All right? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We lost our steak dinner, but that's okay.
Uh, we're, we're ready when, uh, we're on, there we go.
Oh, we're good.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, so we are on item number 14.
Mayor Pro Tem, is your mic, your mic on?
Thank you. We are on item number 14, fiscal year 22 citywide budget review and approval. And we'll get a staff report from Jennifer Eustation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. On May 4, City Council reviewed the first draft of the citywide budget and had no recommended changes. Staff made one adjustment, which did not change the net total that had been presented to council. And in review, the general fund is balanced, which means that revenues either equal expenditures or exceed them. The revenues are $39,452,812, with expenditures of $38,678,061, leaving council with a net of $774,751 for appropriation throughout fiscal year 22. General fund revenues have increased from fiscal year 21 budget by 2.25 million or 6.1%, and expenses have increased from the fiscal year 21 budget by 2.9 million or 8.4% before enhancements. Enhancements consist of eight new positions and four position upgrades totaling $1,092,376 and operating cost enhancements totaling $549,641. The wastewater fund is also balanced with revenues equaling expenses. Revenues and expenses are $11,781,500. Wastewater revenues have increased from the fiscal year 21 budget by $888,700 or 8.2%, and expenses have increased from fiscal year 21 budget by $395,251 or 3.6% before enhancements. And enhancements for the wastewater consist of one new position totaling $288,344 and operating cost enhancements totaling $205,000. And all funds for the city, including the general fund and wastewater, total $92,77,159 in revenues and $87,017,780 in expenditures. And this item sets the citywide budget for fiscal year 22 and provides expenditure authority for operations. And the recommended action is to adopt the citywide budget for fiscal year 22. And with that, I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
And I will open this up for council discussion. Any questions? Mr. Finn's good, Mr. Santos?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have just a, a couple of quick questions. Number one, when you say that the budget is revenues versus expenditures for the general fund, that is, are there, is it bud, is, are reserves budgeted in there? In other words, are we budgeting to remove some of the revenues and hold for reserves?
No, you're, you're budgeting more revenues than you are expenditures, meaning that you're leaving a balance that's going to be available to you to appropriate throughout the fiscal year.
Okay. So that would, that would be the reserves if it came out exactly that amount be the difference between the revenues and expenditures would be our reserves.
Right. If you didn't, if you didn't spend that balance, it would roll up into your reserves.
Okay. And then this may be a question you may or may not be able to answer at this time, and I'm not looking for specifics, but do you have an idea of where we are on the reserves that we're building for the current fiscal year?
Well, what was presented on May 4th for balances is, we were looking at it, and this is of course estimated, an estimated unrestricted balance in general fund of about 15.62 million.
Okay. And that's accumulated, accumulated? That's not just from last, from fiscal year 20?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, that was the only questions I had. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move that we adopt the citywide budget for fiscal year 2022.
I'll second.
And could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem White?
Yes. Item 15, presentation of parking management master plan findings. And we'll get a staff report from Christina Taylor.
Good evening, council. Before you tonight is going to be just a quick presentation of the parking management master plan findings. Back in 2019, city planning staff applied for a grant through SCAG to look at some parking opportunities and challenges that staff felt we have been experiencing, in particular in the downtown area. We did actually win one of the five grants that were awarded roughly in the amount of about $100,000. The study began in June 20, June 2020, and it studied, it looked at five things. So it looked at parking utilization, outreach and engagement, our downtown parking requirements, what parking meter pricing would look like if the city chose to do that at some point in the future, and then resulted in a cumulative parking management master plan. So what I'm going to do is just share my screen and go through the presentation very briefly as this is just a receive and file. Okay. Can you all see my screen?
It's black right now.
It's a black screen, Christina.
Oh, it says sharing is paused, hang on. Oh, resume share. How about now?
There you go.
Okay, cool, great. So the, the study area initially that the city wanted to look at was the downtown area. And so you'll, you may recognize this picture from the general plan downtown, downtown area plan. So Beaumont Avenue, Sixth Street, North and South. And then some other pictures from the general plan. And this study was, was partially in support of the mobility section of the general plan, which does call for rightsizing of parking requirements and looking at things like shared parking, in lieu parking fees, public-private partnerships for parking, possible reduced parking standards and then of course biking and transit opportunities as well. So the, the study was broken down into five, five components. So the facilities utilization, so basically the assessment of parking in the city. We did stakeholder outreach and engagement. We looked at parking requirements in the downtown. Parking meter pricing, again, as something that is popular in other areas, not so much out our way, but in other areas. And then it culminated in the, the recommendations. So firstly, the study area was focused on downtown, but in order to really get an accurate look at the parking that was available, the, the consultants looked at different sub areas. So you can see in the pink, the area that's like Beaumont Marketplace, Sangre Guneo Village, that area. We have the downtown area in purple and in green. And then just some general periphery areas around the city and those you would see in the blue. And the consultants identified 10,499 spaces that were available for parking in these general areas. And you can see those broken down into on-street and off-street for the various areas. The, the use, well, the parking was further broken down into uses. And they got pretty detailed into 33 different land uses. And then they broke down the available parking for each of the categories of land use in each of the areas that were looked at. So they got pretty granular in, in looking at the, the level of detail of the parking. So peak occupancy for a lot of these areas was observed weekday, early afternoon. And then it shows how much of the spaces of each of the areas were, were occupied. Now, this was done during a COVID time. And unfortunately, with SCAG and the way the grant was funded, we, we couldn't push it off to do it later in the year. So that, I think, as far as occupancy of spaces, did skew it a little. But as things started to loosen up, there was a period last year where things loosened up a little bit. They did go back and do some, some checking and there wasn't too much of a difference. So peak, at, at peak time, the sub areas were less than 74% full, as shown in the map. And for the most part, they were less than 43% full. So they, it seemed to be that we had ample parking available. So with that, we did some stakeholder outreach. And we reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Committee. We had a couple of Zoom meetings. We talked about it, the Planning Commission. And you see the list here of other information that was pushed out both through City Hall and through eBlast notifications, social media, et cetera. And so one of the key comments that we received about this was parking spaces are available through downtown, but the way they're distributed does not necessarily make them feasible for use for all the types of businesses, which is a lot of what we knew, which is part of the reason why we wanted this study to be done to see if there was some idea of how we could better maximize the opportunities in downtown. So in, in downtown, some of the parcels have ample parking and some of the parcels can't meet their parking standard, you know, even what the, the minimum standards that the code requires. So that was one of the, one of the findings that we wanted the consulting team to focus on through this process. So we looked at the downtown parking requirements. And so this, you see the picture, this is our, our parking lot over by the, the police department. And currently, this is the city's only shared parking that we have available in the downtown area. So we have residential land uses. So three of the five types of our residential land uses require at least one covered space. Guest parking for multifamily and that kind of thing is included in our, our parking standard. And compact spaces, we don't use to meet the parking requirement for residences. And then we have our commercial uses. So we have, fast food and sit-down have the same parking requirements. And then we have churches and cinemas, like gathering places that kind of fall under the same category. And then things like daycare centers and that, that have a different parking requirement based on usage or number of, of participants or enrollment. So what, what the consulting team did was put together some recommendations based on what they found for the different types of uses. So in some cases, there were no change recommendations. In some cases, there was a recommendation of, of a slight reduction in, in spaces. there was a recommendation of, of a slight reduction in, in spaces, but there's a good number of them where we were pretty on target and there were no changes necessary or no changes recommended. So, then we got to looking at some of the other recommendations. So, a parking in lieu fee. So, this is something that many cities use to allow for some flexibility in parking requirements and to encourage shared parking, and helps with, you know, developments that may not be able to meet, meet their whole parking requirement and still maximize their, you know, their entitlements. So, having a parking in lieu fee allows developers an alternative to the traditional method of satisfying parking requirements, so they can pay a, a fee per space to fully satisfy the parking. So, if, for example, they give their, if there's a site required to provide 20 spaces, they could pay a space, or they could pay a fee to cover all 20, or they could, you know, have, provide 10 and pay a fee for 10, et cetera. So, there are some benefits to that, as you can see in the, in the bottom part of the slide there. And it, one of the best benefits is that the parking in lieu fee in a place like downtown could be used to help fund a shared parking situation so that, you know, people can park once and then walk or get to wherever they, wherever they want to go. Some additional shared parking benefits. So, more efficient use of parking, there's not businesses that are necessarily overburdened by parking standards and tend to not have, you know, an, an overabundance or a lack of parking. It, it provides it in a, in a manner that's accessible and available and can still allow people to get to the places that they need to go. It can also help with reduced construction costs and things like that, which is always a benefit, especially in the current development climate. So, some additional list of options for shared parking recommendations, and again, there's a number of options, and a lot of this, and a lot of this information is from, you know, cities and areas that are already running these types of programs or have seen success with various types of shared parking ideas. Then we get to the parking meter pricing, which honestly, I wasn't very excited about them studying, but it was one of the, one of the contingencies for having the study done was SCAG really did want the parking meter pricing looked at. So, anyway, there's no currently paid parking in the city of Beaumont, and the consultant concluded basically that paid on-street parking in Beaumont is neither viable nor desirable at this time, which, again, staff kind of knew that already, but we went with the study, and I'm glad that they concurred and that they found that it was something that probably wasn't right for us. So, anyway, as we move through management and pricing strategies, at some point, there are all kinds of, of ways that we could implement that if and when the city ever decided to go down that road, and the consultant laid them out for us, both in the presentation and in the actual document that we received. And then, lastly, we did, as I just mentioned, received an entire Parking Management Master Plan, but here are the highlights of some of the recommendations. So, and we have received some short-term, some mid-range, and then some long-term recommendations. So, in the short term, ideally, we would have some additional striping of, of stalls in the downtown, which is consistent with the general plan update and some of the things that we've identified in the downtown area plan. We could look to reduce parking requirements at the downtown, which, from staff perspective, I think is a, is a viable option to consider in the future. Implementing an in lieu parking fee program, and then also look at freeing up underused private parking for partial or full public use, and I think that would qualify as somewhat of a public-private partnership, if we were to go that route. In the midterm, there are some additional ideas that are, again, consistent with the downtown area plan, looking at implementing streetscapes and the pedestrian networks, signage and wayfinding, and then looking at parking management efforts and making sure that short-term parking spaces are being turned over appropriately. And then, in the long term, some other ideas, if and when the need arises, which, you know, the city could look at, something such as paid parking or permit program or something to that effect. But again, that's much longer down the road if and when the need would arise. So, that actually concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, but as I said, this is just a receive and file, and to let you know, staff was awarded the grant, and we did complete the process and received the report, and the information is available both for other city staff, for council, or for the public, anybody who would like to look at it or have questions about parking throughout the city.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
All right. Any questions or concerns from council members? I have a quick question, couple. Payment in lieu of fee, that type of program would only be, we, we would only make that eligible if we went that direction in areas where shared parking opportunities did exist. For example, we wouldn't do that across the board throughout the city when there's a business that really is not, we're not going to benefit from a payment in lieu of fee. Is that correct?
So, we, we actually have some latitude to set that up how we want. Typically, it would be used in areas that would be more constrained or where it would be perceived as beneficial to encourage a shared parking situation rather than individual onsite parking. But if, if we chose to put it on a broader scale, we could do so, allowing in lieu fees to be paid, you know, in full or in part, which, you know, some of the areas I, I wouldn't say would be beneficial to have a full in lieu program, but, you know, instead of doing a variance for a parking shortage on a site that maybe couldn't meet it, an in lieu fee might be a different way to satisfy, you know, the parking shortage. So I think there's opportunities for either or.
Okay. And my last comment is, I'm sure a Senate bill or Assembly bill is going to come down forcing parking fees and parking meters, but until that time, I do agree with you, I don't think we need to start charging for parking, so.
Absolutely agree, yeah. Like I said, that was sort of SCAG's one contingent. If you want this study to be done, we're going to have you look at this particular issue. So, we went with it.
Mr. Finn, are you good?
I do have a, a quick question. You can address it a little bit, but for Christina, I, I think in Sixth Street, the Sixth Street corridor, where you've got some businesses that have plenty of parking and some that don't, and thinking maybe if a business goes out and a new one comes in and they want that proposed use, but their, the, the particular lot they're looking at or building doesn't have adequate parking. Do you think it's possible that the city could help play middleman and coordinate between the adjacent businesses to help with that shared parking event? That way, maybe we can play negotiator in that and help that, you know, facilitate that? Or that if it's a credit kind of thing, that hey, we'll facilitate the credit, we'll collect the fee, and then you get so much per month for providing that parking space? Is that something that the city is considering being the middleman on?
So, I'll tell you, when we have a situation where shared parking would be beneficial, or we know that there's a shortage from one property to another, we do in, in the Planning Department, when we're, when we're looking at the uses, encourage the property owners to talk to each other, or the tenants to talk to, you know, the, the neighboring tenants and come to some sort of written or recorded agreement, right, that says, hey, yeah, we'll share this parking or whatever. And it's not uncommon to have that along, you know, a street like Sixth Street. A lot of times, though, it's more casually done rather than formally done, which is how it should be done in the more formal sense. But we do try to do that. Now, when it comes to any monetary exchange, anything like that, no. Right now, city staff does not have, we don't get involved in that, is that, you know, we don't want to, we, it's probably not the right role for us to get involved in money matters between two private businesses, as far as, you know, leasing or, or any type of land space like that goes. But to the extent that we can help facilitate or encourage a shared agreement, sans any conversations about money or what that fee would look like from one party to another, that's the role that we take right now. If council at any point in time chooses to direct staff to look further into a more formal program, we'd be happy to do that. And this Parking Management Study gives us a good foundation to start with, to have some tools to work with along those lines.
Okay, and in general, have we lost the opportunity for businesses coming in along that Sixth Street corridor due to lack of parking?
You know,
Just in general?
Yeah, over the, my time here, I think we have lost a few, just because maybe parking is not either onsite enough for what they need, or it's not close enough in, in large enough amounts. And so, I wouldn't say it happens a lot, but I have seen it happen a few times over the last few years, where someone says, oh no, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to take this space because there's not enough parking, or I know my clients won't park over there and walk way down here, you know. And it, it does tend to be more on the periphery, like further on the, the west, going towards the freeway, or further down when it, when Sixth Street transitions to a, a little bit more commercial, you know, larger-scale sites with multiple tenants.
And then this was something that we can then hand, kind of hand off to the Planning Commission to work on. This could be kind of an item for them to do this, correct?
Sure, something like that, you could, council could direct staff to bring some items together at, at whatever different types of programs you would like us to look at, and then we would take it back through the Planning Commission, and then ultimately back to you as council, if you directed, to, to formally adopt or direct staff to implement.
Okay, and then, being a member of the Economic Development Committee, and knowing that committee is looking for things to do and, and guidance and direction and so forth, that, you know, are they the proper avenue, or, or both with planning at the same time? You know, don't want to put one in front of the other, or one's more important than the other, but give them both the assignment and say, hey, what can we do with this?
I'll tell you, we're happy to come to Economic Development Committee anytime and talk about the opportunities and, and the things that we're working on. I think something like this, since the Economic Development Committee does have business members in the city, or business owners in the city, also people that, you know, live and shop in the city and whatnot, it would be absolutely appropriate to come and talk to the Economic Development Committee about this and solicit input or assistance as needed for if and when council gives direction on, on working on something like this.
All right. Now, I'm only one council member, but I would say, let's do that. So, I'll leave it up to the rest of them. Thanks.
Thank you. And I will go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. One second. I'm going to roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 16 is Adopt a List of Projects Funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Staff report from Mr. Jeff Hart.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council. Yeah, so, the Road Repair and Recovery Accountability Act of 2017, 17 has provided the city with a funding source through the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act. These funds have been available, more commonly known as SB1, they've been available to fund street, road, and other highway city-related projects. In order for the city to receive these funds, which are administered through the California Department of Transportation, we're required to identify these products that we're receiving these funds within our capital improvement program list. The following two projects were selected as part of the fiscal year 2021 SB1 funds, but will actually be constructed in 21, 22. It's the Annual Slurry Seal fiscal year 2021, 21 project, and the Annual Street Rehab fiscal year 2021 project. These two projects were recently combined and renamed the Annual Citywide Street Rehabilitation and Maintenance Project, which is in accordance with the latest five-year adopted CIP plan. This project has an approved budget of just a little bit over 1.4 million, which is fully funded by, via SB1 funds. The specific streets that were included in this project incurred throughout the city and are identified as follows, as well as were recently identified in the recent street selection item that was brought to council just a few months ago in April, Frantinel Court, First Street, Highland Springs, and Old Valley Parkway. In addition to these rollover projects, staff is now proposing that the Annual Citywide Street Rehabilitation and Maintenance Program for fiscal year 21, 22, in a fully funded amount of a little over 988,000, include the following projects. The first one being a portion of the Sundance community, which is generally located south of Oak Valley, west of Highland Springs, north of Eighth Street, and east of Cherry Valley. This area of Sundance was part of the very early construction within Sundance, and some preventative maintenance now will certainly help the city not incur more costly maintenance by deferring to a later date. Along that same vein, you'll see, that, that portion is actually embedded within your staff report as figure one. Along that same vein, a portion of Fairway Canyon, which is generally located south of the city boundary, west of Tuckwood Canyon, and north of Oak Valley Parkway, you will see that embedded in your staff report as figure two. You'll see the coloring on these, that you'll see that the primary coloring for these is red. There are, you'll see starlight in a portion of Oak Valley as well, that is denoted yellow. The difference in the color coding is that the red is anticipated to receive a traditional slurry seal treatment, and the yellow is anticipated to receive what's, what's called an ARAM slurry seal. It's effectively, it's a, it's a thicker slurry seal, but it also incorporates the use of a geomembrane. The streets that may be conducive to that are, are streets that are maybe not quite neatly full mill and overlay, but are a little bit more damaged than what we would utilize for a traditional slurry seal. In accordance with, with the recent rehabilitation programs that we've been doing, staff will go and verify all of these locations and streets and, and try to identify spot repairs, crack sealing, in order to ensure the longevity of the proposed treatment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Staff is looking for a, a motion to waive the full reading and approve the resolution by the city of Beaumont to adopt a list of projects for fiscal year 2021, 22.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And any questions or comments from council? Mr. Finn, are you good? Mr. Santos?
I'm good.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Mayor, I propose that we waive the full reading and approve by title only a resolution of the city, the city council of the city of Beaumont to adopt a list of projects for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, Accountability Act of 2017.
I'll second that. And could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim, really quick, before we move on, I just want to make sure we don't have any public comment. I don't have any written.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Okay, thank you. And I'll do roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Okay. Item 17, Agreement to Provide Animal Control Services to the city of Calamasa for an initial term of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 30th, 2023. And that's Chief DeLees, please.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. So, before you have an agreement that has been reviewed by our city attorney, has gone before the Calamasa City Council for their approval, now it's before you. And so, for a better part of a decade, the city of Beaumont's provided animal control services to the city of Calamasa. We found that their staff is cooperative, their residents are pretty responsible pet owners, and so they're about 10% of our call volume. We anticipate that increasing as their population increases to perhaps 12%, maybe 13% of call volume. 2020 was certainly an off-year for gauging because of the COVID-19, but just looking at some historical data, they seem to fit around that 10% trend line. The agreement is for initial two-year, $48,249 for each year, and then there is an option for a third year if And then there is an option for a third year if counsel would approve that. And then if it fits within the needs of the City of Beaumont and Calamasa, we would enact that third-year option. With that, can I answer any questions you may have?
Do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
Hey, quick question, what are, what does Calamasa pay us now? As we've been doing this for the last decade?
It's increased, but for the last couple of years, it's been $40,000. But as our costs went up, then I adjusted their costs as well to cover. What I take is total call volume and then total budget to operate animal control and appropriate their portion to them.
Okay, that's all I had. Anybody else? Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I appreciate that restructuring allows for the recapture of the fees for the city, and so thank you for that. And just to verify that Section 6, that termination for both parties, no penalty for either party, correct, as long as?
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Finn?
I do have a question. If it was terminated, does Calamasa have an alternative? Do they go to Utaipeta to do it? Do they have a neighboring city that could help out if something didn't work out with us?
The best guess is they would probably turn to the County of Riverside, who was each of our providers before the City of Beaumont took the initiative to create our own program many years ago. But it typically be the County of Riverside.
Gotcha, I forgot for a second, Utaipeta was saying the county. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Santos?
I'm good, I could make a move, a motion?
Please do.
Okay, I'd like to do a motion to approve the agreement to provide animal control field services to the City of Calamasa.
I'll second that.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number 18, approval of a purchase order in amount not to exceed $455,872.8 to creative bus sales for the purchase of two electric vehicle shuttles in accordance with the hybrid and zero emission truck and bus voucher incentive project. And that's a staff report from Elizabeth Gibbs, please.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and counsel. The item you have before you is to purchase two electric vehicle shuttles in the amount of $455,872.8. In March of 2020, we secured a grant for two electric vehicle shuttles. This is the next step in the process. We do have to, as part of the grant, we do have to agree to scrap two of our either unleaded fuel buses or CNG buses. And staff has determined that 28, unit 2835 and unit 2836 have exceeded their lifespan. We actually received those two particular buses years ago from RTA. And I think we paid a dollar each for them, so they have certainly exhausted their lifespan. And so the, the item that you have tonight is to not only approve the purchase order with creative bus sales, but to also authorize staff to scrap those two buses in accordance with the grant. And what we have to do is actually wreck, take them to a wrecking yard and have them completely dismantled and scrapped. We cannot just auction those two vehicles off. So with that, the fiscal impact again is grant funded. There is no general fund impact. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Unless there are any questions, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve a purchase order amount not to exceed $455,872.8 to creative bus sales and authorized transit bus number 2835 and 2836 to be scrapped per the hybrid and zero emission truck and bus voucher incentive project using a certified wrecking yard.
I'll second.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
I don't have any written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
Okay.
So can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Item 19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont for authorization of the execution of the certifications of assurances and authorized agent forms for the low-carbon transit operation program for the following project, video camera purchase and install, $70,000. Staff report, Elizabeth Gibbs.
Thank you again. This item is actually in addition to an item that counsel heard back in March. We received $40,000 from Caltrans for the LC TOP grant cycle, and we were recently contacted by Caltrans. They indicated that there was another $30,000 available. One of our neighboring operators failed to meet their deadline for the grant, and so they asked if we wanted it. And of course, we said yes. And so this item tonight is to update the resolution for that grant so that we can receive the additional $30,000 in funding. Again, there's no fiscal impact. This is money coming from Caltrans, and it's earmarked for a video camera system for our public transit operations. Recommended action is to waive, waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont for authorization of the execution of the certifications of assurances and authorized agent forms for the low-carbon transit operations program, affectionately known as LC TOP, for the following project, video camera purchase and install in the amount of $70,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And do we have any public comments on this one?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Counsel discussion? Mr. Finn?
Yes, I have a quick question, Ms. Gibbs. Is this cameras for install on the buses or is it like out in the field to monitor buses as they go by or, or bus stops and so forth?
No, these are on the buses.
Okay.
The system that we currently have is outdated, and we do need to update the technology.
And then I would imagine that has some type of Wi-Fi or relay back to central dispatcher hub or something?
Correct, to, back to our server room.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, Ms. Gibbs, is this for video cameras on all the buses or a number of buses or?
The, the project is for all the buses. This particular grant will not be enough to fund the entire project, so we have other funding sources for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Santos?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for item 19. I'll move as recommended by Ms. Gibbs.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Item number 20 is the brine line flow improvements. Staff report, Thaxton Van Bell.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Item 20 before you tonight is for improvements to our brine line. As a recap, our brine line was built as part of the salt mitigation project. It essentially is a 23-mile lateral that changes 1,500 feet in elevation, goes under washes and culverts and over bridges. Tonight's proposal is to do some improvements, particularly along the line across Redlands Boulevard. The last four miles or so is very flat, and we've been experiencing some flow restriction and backup in that area. The improvements consist of opening up some blind flanges, installing some stand pipes, allowing the flow to vent and hopefully flow more freely. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, our recommendation is to approve the not-to-exceed contract for $35,000 to TE Roberts.
And do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Okay, counsel questions? Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, just real quickly, so for the $35,000, is it coming out of the contingency?
That is correct. The contract is closed with TE Roberts, but this will come out of that fund. So it'll be a separate proposal and not an extension or involved with the original contract.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Mr. Finn, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Santos?
I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay, so I'll take a motion on item number 20.
Okay, I'll do, I move to authorize a city staff to approve a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $35,000 payable to TE Roberts Inc. for the proposed system improvements.
I'll second that. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Item 21, ratification of emergency repair costs to the Beaumont Mesa lift station. Staff report, Thaxton Van Bell.
Good evening, again. Earlier, Ms. Day teed this one up pretty well. This is to do some improvements that are needed on an emergency basis at the Mesa Lift Station. As you know, we're conducting a study in a wastewater master plan, and part of that process really brought to light the deficiencies at that station. We all knew by the naked eye that a lot of improvements were needed. There was a lot of degradation at the site. But once we learned that it could overflow in such a short period and we lacked the appropriate redundancies, we took immediate action, knowing how lengthy the time to order things like pumps and to secure contracts are for improvements. So that station was originally built with two lines, four pumps. What we've learned is along the line sometime in the past, there was a catastrophic event there that destroyed all the pumps. Two were retrofitted. And then, as Ms. Day alluded to, one of the two lines was never fully built out, back to the wastewater treatment plant. This particular item is just to get us a third pump in there for redundancy, do the construction for the retrofit. The more expansive project in the future will address things like the line and increase capacity and then look to further the pump capacity. This lift station is a regional lift station. If you refer to the map, it currently handles four inflows from other lift stations. A fifth one is soon to come. And then this will also be the entire gravity flow area where we're looking to locate our future fire and police stations. And once that area starts to develop out. So tonight, in front of you, is a recommendation to ratify the emergency costs that we put into motion to update and secure the Mesa Lift Station. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So real quick, ratify the cost of putting in motion emergency repairs. That means you haven't done the repairs now? You just ordered the, the parts, is that what you mean?
That is correct. Because of the long lead time, we immediately put in the request for the pump and we secured a contractor. The pump is still, at this point, another 12 weeks out.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
And any questions or comments? Good, Mr. Finn, you okay? All right, so I'll take a motion on item number 21, please. I'll move to ratify the cost of emergency repairs to the Beaumont Lift Station, totaling $216,742. I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes.
Item 22, City Council approval to purchase the high-pressure spray system and repairs to the fine screens for a not-to-exceed price of $150,000. And that's a staff report from Ms. Christine Day.
Hi, good evening, counsel. This is a modification to the new waste water treatment plant system. As the flow comes into the treatment plant, it, it goes through what we call the bar screens, which filters out all the big material. And then it goes to what we call the fine screens, which takes out more of the smaller particle items prior to going into the MBR system for its first filtration. As, as we've been operating this system over the last, coming on a year, we have encountered some material within our waste water stream that's not necessarily a common material, but it is clogging basically the fine screens, which is resulting in the staff having to spray these screens down almost every single day to keep from an overflow situation. That overflow then, again, could potentially get to a waterway which would be a significant potential fine for the City of Beaumont. We have been working with, Huber is the manufacturer. They do offer a, a subsequent system, which they call their high-pressure cleaning system. Basically, this is a system that on a set duration would go through and clean the fine screen similar to what the staff is having to do manually. We would start with, within every six hours, and then if that is, is not adequate, we would reduce that timeframe down. These nozzles would cut the fibrous material and allow it then to go back into the process and, and eliminate the need for staff to stand out there for several hours on end. Basically, we have operators out there doing that, which is, is not the most efficient use of their time. This is not a change order to the project, but we will pay for it out of the project contingency. We have, we are buying this straight from Huber instead of coming through the contractor. It is, it is a more cost-effective method to do that. Huber will actually come install it themselves. We will bring back to the council a change order with the contractor to put necessary conduit water in place for the operation of this system. This lead time is roughly about 12 weeks, which will likely put this past the contract deadline. And so that's the other reason why you're not seeing a change order through Lyles. Again, both, both a cost savings as well as a timing issue. And what we're recommending is that, that the City Council authorize a not-to-exceed $150,000. This does implement the, the new high, high-pressure spray system as well as repair a damaged drum that we had from some manual spraying that happened probably five, six months ago. We would anticipate doing those at the same time because once we take it down, we only take it down once and, and we would divert the flow that one time. This, this should eliminate all of our issues at the plant, free up the operator. It would eliminate any future damages. And we believe that this is a, a good use of any of the contingencies. Again, this is not something that was a design flaw or something that was left out. It was just something that was unanticipated, but due to our waste stream is something that has become necessary. We have the money in contingency and are able to allocate this. So we request that counsel authorize up to $150,000. And again, the staff will bring back a change order for Lyles for any necessary conduit associated. Happy to answer any questions. Thaxton is also on the line if you need any technical or he'd probably give you some pictures because he loves to send me pictures of what's actually on there. And I don't recommend it early, first thing in the morning, so.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I don't have any written comments.
Okay.
Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line, Nicole.
Okay, we'll open this for counsel discussion. Mr. Martinez?
A couple of quick comments. So I like the fact that it's a, looks like a proven system, 100 installs or so plus. It looks like it's been vetted with other jurisdictions, so I like that idea. Are the screens standard? In other words, if we decide that we want to modify screens in the future and so forth, is this a nozzle system that's going to be able to, to adapt to different types of systems? Or is it going to be only for this type?
No, we actually talked about modifying the screens. Unfortunately, we can't because Unfortunately, we can't, because we have a standard coming into the MBR filtration that we have to have this level of, of screening for the wastewater stream. And so that's not really an option. So this was really our next option to be able to allow the screens to work properly.
All right, thank you. Mr. Santos?
Just a quick, you know, comment on this. I'd like to say thank you about that, I mean, especially on this vendor. And you did a pretty good, you know, working with them, giving us, you know, a cost-effective cost on this. I mean, it's really nice to hear that on this. So that's the only comment on that. I really appreciate your hard work, Daxton and Christine on that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Finn, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion on item twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a high-pressure spray system and repairs to the fine screens for not to exceed price of a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars payable to Huber Technology, Inc.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. Item twenty-three. Thank you. Authorize a contract with NetSync in the amount of ninety-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-four dollars, eighty-two cents for a data center uninterruptible power supply upgrade. Staff report from Carrie Mendoza.
Yes, Edgar's, Edgar's working his magic behind the wall there, so I let him know that I thought I could handle this with you this evening. You have before you a NetSync proposal for a data center upgrade, and it includes a five-year maintenance warranty package on un interruptible supplies, UPSs, as you've heard them referred to, keyboard, video, and mice, KVM switches, cabling, and server rack mounting systems. Our data centers are in need of a little TLC, if you will. The majority of the equipment in our data center is seven to ten years old. We've been upgrading, prioritizing annually based on the needs of the organization. And recently, with some of the adjustments and the changes to the budget that finance brought forward about a month or so ago, we were able to squeeze this in and get this taken care of this year and pulled it out of the, the long-term CIP for IT needs. We did bid this out on public purchase. We got four bids and NetSync, while they weren't the lowest bidder, they were the most responsible bidder. They met all the needs and the requests that we wanted with the five-year maintenance. So Edgar is in the building and able to answer any questions that I may not be able to. But otherwise, I'm asking that you authorize the city manager execute the contract with NetSync in the amount of ninety thousand and change.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this one?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
I have no one on the line.
Okay, council discussion. Mr. Finn?
Yes, I have a quick question. I might be getting off topic just a little bit, but with the data center, do we have proper cooling and is everything set up fine? I come from, well, when I was in the military in my previous career was in electronics and cooling was a major factor. When you start getting too much equipment in a small space, things overheat, equipment starts to fail, and you get all kinds of problems in your, you know, five-to-ten-year shelf life is, you know, is diminished, you know, quite a bit. So are we in a position that that's not a concern at this time or could be in the future? And could it add to potential more equipment purchases and that sort of stuff?
Actually, you, Facilities has been handling all of our heating and air conditioning cooling needs. And yes, we are, we have been in desperate need of some new HVAC systems specifically for the police department. But Facilities has been on top of that. We've gone to bid. We've done everything from roof repairs to HVAC to ensure that our, the data integrity in those systems is taken care of in those server rooms.
And is that on a raised floor platform where cooling comes in from underneath the equipment racks?
Not, it is not, yeah. The police department is fortunate enough to have a raised floor in their server room. However, the HVAC does not come underneath, no. Everything's overhead in both, the two main facilities.
I would certainly like to see some type of long-term plan towards that route as, as the city grows and we need more equipment and so forth, because it'll kill a system real quick.
Yeah. I can work with Facilities on where we're at. I know we, again, with these long-term budgets, Facilities is one of them. So we can work on whatever their cycle is and strategically look at alternatives in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Mr. Santos?
I think.
I was gonna, yeah, Edgar, I think she's after your job.
Yeah, that's fine. She is my boss.
Yeah, that's true.
I tell them I know enough to be dangerous, guys, that's all.
Did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, we can't come back and present a full plan for the data centers. There, this is getting us through and by. Every year we've allocated some money, we come back to council, and this was one of those items. But yeah, we do need, are in need of some cooling, getting those data center needs in place would be great to bring back to council. So I'll take those recommendations and bring those back.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for?
So, previous, thank you. So previously, we had passed upgrades for our software and stuff for cybersecurity and so forth. This is just doing with the mechanics and stuff of the data center.
Correct, yes. Councilmember Finn alluded to, is the more applications, the more hardware we add, the more heat we get in that system. So, yeah, it, we have a lot of devices that we paid a lot of money for with your guys' approval. So, yeah, it needs to be cooled, it needs to be, there's some racks that are dilapidated. We can't put more devices in those racks, because they have older screws or they're just not meant like the new stuff. So this will help us with that. We also have some keyboard monitors that come up that actually rack up and get connected to the back of the devices. So, yeah, this is, like I said, providing us some upgrades, but I can't provide a full solution going forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarity. Thank you. All right, thank you. So I will entertain a motion on item number twenty-three, please.
I could do the motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute contract with NetSync in the amount of ninety-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents for a data center UPS hardware replacement solution to include a five-year support service contract.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim White?
Yes. Item twenty-four is discussion and direction to city staff regarding the city of Beaumont's assistance to the Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Parks District for the construction of a regional park generally located on the north side of Cherry Valley and approximately one mile east of Interstate Ten, also known as the Danny Thomas Ranch. And I get to do my first staff report. So, I guess I'm staffed tonight also. Okay, so on December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, the Parks District authorized the execution of certificate of acceptance of a donation of approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-three acres from TSG Cherry Valley LP. The one-hundred-and-twenty-acre site is the former home of the Danny Thomas Ranch. The district accepted the land, and according to a district staff report at the time intends to, quote, "construct more baseball parks and potentially a sports complex." District staff also wrote in the staff report that the district could put the property to many good uses, including but not limited to developing the land and constructing more baseball fields and other sports fields and sport recreational facilities dedicating open space for recreational use. While the property's not in the city of Beaumont's jurisdiction, it's very close proximity to the city's northern boundary, and the proposed facility would be heavily utilized by Beaumont residents. As a family-oriented community, Beaumont has a strong need for additional sports fields to accommodate youth sports and would benefit greatly from this endeavor. Additionally, a regional sports complex would bring visitors into the region, would provide indirect economic benefits. The district has engaged consultants and is initiating the conceptual design phase. The district has been a great partner and has proven a track, a proven track record of providing quality facilities and services to the region. I propose the city council make Beaumont city staff available to the district as needed to support the design and development of the Danny Thomas Ranch and to direct me to officially offer the city of Beaumont's assistance. So I've had a couple of discussions with both the director of the Parks District as well, or I guess he would be the general manager of the Parks District, as well as the president of the foundation, Dan Hughes, a longtime Parks board member. And what I've learned is, first of all, they're very interested in providing a facility that will improve the community as a whole. And I think we've had discussions over the years, I think all of us have, with the idea that we have to do something with our parks and our assignments to fields. We just do not have enough fields for all of the families that have sporting activities here. And I think it's important that we at least provide input and help the Parks District to understand, first of all, what I think the community could really benefit from, and also to provide our assistance if, if needed, and to see if we can work on some type of cooperative effort. So I want to start by saying there has no, no commitments have been made. I have no, I will have no authority to make any commitments. There's a lot of moving pieces in this. I've learned that the Parks District is already entertaining other performers, offers, options, and they may or may not include any kind of sports park, even though that was, seemed to appear, seemed to be the purpose of the donation as well as the original intentions of the Parks District. So, you know, I think it's important that we try and move forward and reach out to them. The, Mr. Hughes has said that he will put a similar item on their council for discussion on their board on June ninth, which is basically just opening a line of communication. And it's too early to really discuss any details, but I do want to make sure that if the Parks District is going, is considering going in a different direction, then what would really benefit the city of Beaumont, in my opinion, of providing not only the fields that we need, but also building something that will be a destination point, something that will bring in a lot of interest into Beaumont and could provide significant funding for the Park Districts for them to continue to move forward with their projects. So, at this point, I have, I'm open to any questions if you guys have them. If you want more clarification of what my, of what my plan is, and if you want to provide me more detailed direction than what I'm asking for, I'm also willing to listen to that. So before we go to council discussion, do we have any public comments?
I have no written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
Okay. So, any questions? Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, so, so first of all, I think if we can contribute to the success of a possible regional sports complex, I think it'd just be tremendous for the area. So hopefully, that's going to be something they're looking at. But I, I definitely support our involvement, talking with the Parks District, you know, in any case. You know, when I was mayor back in two thousand nineteen, Mr. Parton and I discussed possibilities of a public-private partnership of some sort of a complex in that area. Back at the time, we thought maybe the city might be granted the land. But, you know, things change and the direction has changed, which is fine. You know, it's still within our region and it's still for the benefit of the, of our, you know, residents and the regional residents. So, you know, I'm very supportive still. Here's what I would like, though, as far as assurance. You know, it's early on, I understand that. I just would like to make sure that we have staff-to-staff talk. So it'd be like you, Mr. Parton, maybe Ms. Gibbs, go and talk to, you know, Mr. Hughes and, and, you know, just kind of get together so everybody's on this, on the same page. What I would like is to, first of all, what is exactly are we looking from the city? What exactly are the, is our involvement, basically? You know, what is it that we're being asked to do? What is it that we can do? So we have kind of a clear vision and goal so that we understand what our, our participation is. That, that's number one. And number two, definitely, I would like details about the agreement that exists. I want to know more about it, so as we get involved, I want to know what we're getting involved with. What is it that, what's said there? What, what is it that we can do, but also what are our limits? I don't want to open us to any type of liability. I don't want anybody to come back and say, well, the city said this and the city said that. I want to make sure that, you know, we're there for offering advice and suggestions, but, you know, I want this clear, clear vision, clear goal to make sure that we have our parameters set, pretty much. But I'm all for it, and I think it's a great idea. I think it'll be a great asset there, because you've been involved with it back when, way back when. So, you know, so you've got familiarity with it, so I have no problem with that. I just want, again, those goals and more information about this agreement that exists.
So, let me address two of your issues. I agree with you, we need to know what our role could be. But the first thing we need to find out is what are their intentions?
Yes, of course.
And, you know, if, if they're working on other direction, and I think we still need to weigh in and, and provide our input of what we think would be the best use of that property for our community. And I agree with you, if you, if you sort of dig into the contract that was developed between the Parks District and the property owner that was donating, the donor, there are a number of significant issues in there that may or may not impact our, our being involved. I don't, I think that before we get too far down the road, we would definitely want a, a strong legal opinion from our legal team on what our possible liabilities are. But that we may never come to that point if, if we determine that we're not, it's not a viable option for us to, to contribute and support that project. So, I want, again, I want to assure you that this is just to sort of make our intentions known and find out what their intentions are, and then bring that back to a future council meeting. I think it's also important to get, and I've talked to, to Mr. Hughes and Mr. Burke about this, is to get as much input from our community. And so they've already indicated that if, if we do move down this road, that they will do a community outreach to see what our community wants there. And I think that'll, that'll be important in our decision-making process.
And one of my third concerns, you answered, about making sure their board was, you know, involved with this as well, you know, approving it. So you answered that, so thank you for that.
Mr. Santos?
I think I, you answered most of my questions on this. I mean, the main thing on me, it's the, you know, we need a legal, legal, our legal counsel to get involved and also our city manager, see what's the original contract on this. I mean, you did touch it, and I'm for it. I mean, I'm a sports guy. I mean, I like, you know, when I heard this, you and Mayor Loret discussing this way back then, and I'm excited about it, and now it's, it's, look like it will happen. But the thing is, you know, I like to see the Beaumont is, you know, I'm not saying taking advantage of something, but I would like to work together for, for one, one goal is to be, have a successful sports complex in there. That's all I have. So, thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Finn?
Yes, thank you. I think it's a great idea. I think that if we can show support to them, that perhaps we can garner support from the city of Cala Mesa as well. And thinking about the topic and the work that I do with our church youth programs, we're often trying to find a park to have an outdoor gathering or event or something to do with the youth and the children and so forth. So I think there's the, certainly the need out there for a regional park. I like to think that, I don't know, we can mirror something that, you know, the Kaipa has done. I think it's a great idea to get staff involved and so forth. I think the man-hours to put in would be minimal in the beginning to at least have a discussion, show some friendly support to them, help them maybe brainstorm some ideas of what they would like to do, gather our input that we can provide. And I guess the question that I would have going forward is, do we have the ability to contribute to something like that? That's out of our city's jurisdiction. If we are allowed to do so, I think it would be a great benefit because. If we are allowed to do so, I think it would be a great benefit because if we show some financial support, maybe Calamase could do as well, because I think that they would be a benefit from that, pulling from the new construction that's just south of the freeway from there. And I don't know that the Parks and Recreation has the budget to take full use of that, but I think once it's in place, it would be fully utilized and be a great resource for the area. I, I appreciate your volunteering to help with that. And I guess I have a question. Did they approach you or did you have the idea to offer the lending? And, and that, and the reason why I ask is, I don't think we want to tell them what to do with it, but to give them, you know, some advice and some guidance and, and helping them with that.
No, and, and that's a good question. I actually, as Mr. Martinez alluded to, we started discussing this, at least myself and Mr. Laura, and of course, Brown Act didn't allow us to discuss it with anyone else several years ago, when the first, when the supervisors approved the move to approve the warehouse. And the big concern at that time was, the community didn't want warehouses continuing to encroach upon Cherry Valley and North Beaumont, and the idea was that the developer came up with the idea of donating a park district. So we started talking about it back then. I can guarantee you that we are only going to provide our input and offer assistance at this point, but you are absolutely right, Mr. Finn. When it comes down to what role we can play and what role they would want us to play in it, then we will have jurisdictional issues, because I just can't see that not being an issue that would need to be discussed. And again, I don't want to get ahead of it. The next step, as I see it, is if it comes to their meeting on the 9th. Real quick, is anyone, does anyone here remember who the backup liaison is on this to the Parks District? Okay, because I will not be able to make the night, the meeting of the 9th. I think Mr. Parton's going to try and attend, but if any of you would like to attend, it's a Zoom meeting on the 9th. And so the next step is after they welcome our support, I hope, then we will, I will sit down with Mr. Hughes, Mr. Burke, and Mr. Parton, and I think Ms. Gibbs made, that made, maybe a good suggestion. I'll leave that up to Mr. Parton on that. So if, I think you guys have provided me the direction I need to move forward, and hopefully I will have something at least promising to report back in our next, not, probably not the 15th, but the meeting after that. So, okay. We'll go ahead and move on with the, did I ask you about public comments?
I don't remember.
Okay.
I think you did, I think you did.
Okay, so do we have any public comments on this?
I don't have anything written. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No one on the line.
Okay, so I, I guess it's asking for a motion. Okay, so someone want to make the motion?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion. To allow Beaumont city staff be available to the district for the design and development of the Danny Thomas Ranch and direct Lloyd White, Mayor Protim, as a liaison of the district to officially offer the city of Beaumont's assistance.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes. Item number 25, cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for July 6, 2021, and after uploading tonight, tonight's meeting, I would assume we're going to be able to do July 6th, so I'll leave this to Mr. Todd Parton.
Thank you, and I was personally hoping we could add more meetings, especially through the summer, but we did hear council loud and clear about needing to go dark, potentially around the holidays. So we have, we were able to organize our meeting schedule to be able to free up the July 6th regular city council if council is so inclined. So concludes my report.
It does free staff up from one less process of organizing a meeting, correct?
Yes, and they're very disappointed to do that. Nicole was in tears practically.
Okay, so any public comments on this one?
I don't have any written comments. Carrie, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers on the line.
Any questions for the city manager? Nope. So I will go ahead and make a motion that we cancel the regular city council meeting date scheduled for July 6, 2021.
I'll second that.
And get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Aye.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim White?
Yes.
Legislative updates and discussion. Mr. Warsinski?
Thank you, Mayor Protim, rest of the council. Good evening. Got a quick legislative update for you tonight. Hold on. There we go, I'm back. I got a quick legislative update for you tonight that's really going to focus on the federal budget that was proposed last Friday. President Biden did propose a $6 trillion budget for the upcoming fiscal year, very aggressive increases in federal spending across infrastructure, education, research, public health, paid family leave, and childcare. The proposal, so the budget proposal actually includes the, the two plans that possibly were going to be in bill form passed by Congress, and those are commonly referred to as the American Jobs Plan and the American Families Plan. So if you've been tracking those or somewhat monitoring those over the last month or so, those two bills have basically been merged into the fiscal year budget of the federal government. The budget projections do show that the $6 trillion price tag is an initial shot out there with spending steadily increasing throughout the next couple fiscal years until it reaches around $8 trillion by 2031, and that's based on the president's fiscal forecasting and future budget projections. And as part of that, Biden is asking Congress for $932 billion for discretionary non-defense programs for the next fiscal year, which is a significant increase, and they're also proposing a 750, almost seven, almost 760 billion in defense funding, which is actually an uptick from the previous, previous administration. I'm not going to go too much into the details of the jobs plan, American Family Plan, because we've kind of go over that before. Notably, the package does not contain a healthcare public option, but President Biden is looking to Congress to help create a public option and possibly pass a bill that permits Medicare to negotiate with pharmaceutical companies on various drug prices. So that concludes my report on the federal level, and then I'm going to shift to the state level, and as, as you know, Californians love the lottery. So what the governor has done is he's created a Vax For The Win program. You may have heard about this in the news over the last couple days or so, and it was detailed more over the weekend. So what they're doing is they're trying to incentivize people that have not yet been vaccinated with some dollar amounts. So there's going to be cash prizes from randomized drawings the next two Fridays in the sum of $50,000 per person. And then on June 15th, which is the expected, I guess reopening date of the state of California, if you will, or when we get out of the, the tiered status, they're going to select 10 Californians and award them $1.5 million each. Now, all of these drawings do apply to everyone that's received at least one vaccination dose so far, and the money being distributed is contingent upon those individuals that may have received one, but not the second, to receive their second dose in order to be eligible for that money. And I thought another interesting one was, obviously, because I think ages 12 and older eligible for vaccines currently. So if a, a child may win that is 13, the, the dollar amounts, whether it's the $50,000 or the million and a half, go into a secured bank account, if you will, that the eligible child is prepared to accept that money when they reach the age of 18. And then lastly, starting Sunday, so a couple days ago, the next 2 million people to receive and complete their vaccination within the state of California are eligible to receive a $50 prepaid gift card or a $50 grocery card, whichever they would like. So that, that really ends my vaccination lottery presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Lastly, on the legislative front, staff is actively tracking each of the bills that are on our hot list and will be preparing a update for council at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the city treasurer report, and we have our city treasurer with us tonight. There he is.
You've got your city treasurer.
All right.
Mr. Mayor Protim. I have no report because our finance audit committee meets next week, so I will have a, a report for you on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk report, Mr. Melman.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and council. Nicole informed me that somehow we never gave you a report on our public records request for the month of March, and I wanted to do that. It was a busy month. We had 39 requests. We completed all 39. The staff time allocated was 16.5 hours. In addition, six of them also involve legal time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have a report for last month?
I believe the April report was, was given, if I recall correctly.
Okay.
I, I was not at that particular meeting, but I, I'm not sure whether Nicole did or not, to be honest.
Okay, that's okay.
April's included in the, in the next item in 25.
Oh, okay, so.
Or 26, I'm sorry.
So we'll move on to the, thank you, Mr. Melman. We'll move on to the city attorney report, Mr. Pinkney.
I have nothing to report this evening.
And city manager report, Mr. Parton.
Oh, my. Thank, thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm sorry that Mayor Laura couldn't attend. So in your packet tonight, we have our monthly project update that takes you through May. So when you really want to get excited and you feel a little down, if you just read this report, you'll get very enthused about the projects and the updates that we have going on.
Okay.
So we have that. One thing I did want to remind everybody is that Beaumont will be having a fireworks display on the 4th of July. However, Stewart Park will be closed. We are in the process of demolition and is part of the initial processes of that park, redo and renovation. So we are encouraging people, watch from a distance, you know, we know safe places to go, and just be respectful of any potential lingering COVID or, or other kind of safety issues. But there is more information that will be forthcoming on that over the next couple weeks, especially. And finally, I do not want the Lakers nation to despair. I know you're going down in flames tonight. The Mavericks will take care of the Clippers for you, and we will carry that banner for the Western Conference moving forward. So that concludes my report.
I have a quick question. So the park is not going to be available for people to hang out during the fireworks. Are we going to be actively keeping people away? Because I don't know what state the demo is in.
Yep.
Is it going to be a safety issue if people just show up anyways? And what are our plans?
The park will be fenced, so people won't physically be able to get into the park.
Okay.
So they can watch, so the idea is they can watch from like Palm, from some of the other traditional perimeter areas that they can watch.
So they'll still be able to park and walk around, but they will be kept out of the park itself?
Yes, it will be secured and it will not be, no one will be able to physically enter into the park property.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions for city manager?
Hmm.
All right. What place are the Rangers in these days?
Rangers are living down to their expectations right now. They're.
All right, and next time, a future agenda items. Do any council members have future agenda items they'd like considered? Okay.
No.
And we'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with Mr. Martinez.
Okay, so I attended the school district's retirement recognition ceremony, and I had a chance to talk to the new superintendent.
Okay.
We have a new superintendent for the district, and she's very thrilled, she's very positive, and she's very thrilled to keep the open channels with the city, and she's very motivated. So I'm pretty confident we're going to maintain those positive, productive relationships going, going in the future. I did talk a little bit about the safety on Brookside, on the traffic, kind of looking into the return of students in the fall. So, you know, I'm, I am sure Mr. Parton and chief will be talking with the district soon about, you know, different things that we can do to help promote safety there. So if it's possible, maybe kind of give us a little rundown. I don't know if that's future agenda or not, but just maybe in your city manager report in July, just kind of see what, what came up of that conversation would be nice. And lastly, I just want to thank our active and retired military for their service, especially those that sacrifice their lives for our freedom and to the families that preserve their memory. Yeah, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Finn?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, and Mr. Santos?
Thank you. I have nothing to report, but I would like to say something. Oh, let me go on RTA. RTA, I, I, you know, I attended that last week, and they're, we're preparing for, for the kids to come in, especially the colleges and everything, and there, there was a, a proposal on, on, on their, you know, on their books that there will be a fair, fair rights on, on a certain given, given period, on the months of, you know, till September. Now, my, my thing is, it's especially in Beaumont, there's a lot of, you know, returning students this coming August, and hopefully, probably, you know, Ms. Gibbs have our plan and everything to accommodate that on, on the transportation, on, on the, on, on the Beaumont transportation, to accommodate the, the kids who's coming in first time, summer first time, I mean, especially in the grade nine, they're coming in. I mean, that's my, my, my thing on, on this. And then also next, next month, or next week, I would say, that, you know, some students are coming, I mean, attending also of their summer class in person. So hopefully, our transit will be, you know, capable of, or has a plan to, you know, accommodate them on, on the, on some of our students, especially on, on this coming, this coming, next week, actually. And that's all I have, Mayor Protim White.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I don't have anything to report tonight, so we will adjourn the meeting tonight at 9:22. Incredible.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.